All members of the EPC are participating in the meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting may do so live at mountainview dot legistore dot com, on YouTube at mountainview.gov slash YouTube, and on Comcast Channel 26. As noted in the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comment during the public comment period for an item by joining the Zoom webinar with a webinar ID of eight five three zero zero seven zero five two four zero. Emails and voicemail messages received prior to 5:00 PM today were forwarded to the EPC. All votes will be taken by roll call vote and I ask the EPC clerk to take the roll call. Ms. Whitehill?
Commissioner Clerk?
Here.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yeah.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Here.
Commissioner Nunez?
Here.
Vice Chair Yin?
Here.
And Chair Cranston?
Here.
All Commissioners are present?
You. The next item on the agenda is Oral Communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the EPC on a matter that is not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the Commission from acting on a non-agenda item. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on a non-agenda item? If so, please click the Wave's Hand button in Zoom or press the star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six. EPC clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. Whitehill, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
No one wishing to speak on this item.
We'll close Oral Communications. Item four on the agenda, four point one, is mixed-use development at 334 San Antonio Road. First, do we have any Commissioners wish to disclose either contact with the applicant or visits to the site? I didn't talk to the applicant, but it's pretty hard for me to not drive past the site since it's not that far from... Commissioner Haymeyer?
Likewise, I have visited the site but have not been attached to the applicant.
Vice Chair Yin?
The same.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Likewise, the same.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Did I?
Commissioner Clerk?
Yeah, same.
Nothing from Commissioner Nunez?
Just like from virtue of living in Mountain View, I've been past the site.
Alright, so we'll be starting off with a presentation from Rebecca Shapiro, Deputy Zoning Administrator, and Stephanie Williams, Planning Manager and Zoning Administrator. Becca, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Cranston and Commissioners. As noted, I'm Rebecca Shapiro, Deputy Zoning Administrator, and the item I'm presenting to you tonight is a public hearing to consider EPC's recommendations to the City Council for a mixed-use residential development at 334 San Antonio Road. The project site is located on the southwest corner of San Antonio Road and California Street. It is immediately surrounded by one-story commercial uses to the south, the west, and the north. And across San Antonio Road to the east are other recent developments, including the Gray Star Mixed-Use Residential Project under construction kitty corner to the project site, and the Village at San Antonio Developments in San Antonio Center. The proposed project would replace the existing Valero service station with a mixed-use development comprised of 62 residential units and one commercial unit constructed above two levels of underground parking. This is a zoning compliant SV30, B330 project, which includes a state density bonus request, which allows the project to exceed the 1.85 maximum FAR and four-story height that would ordinarily be allowed on the site under the San Antonio Precise Plan. In addition to the proposed state density bonus request, there's a provisional use permit request to allow rooftop amenities above the third floor. And the project also includes a request to exempt the ground floor, commercial floor area from the FAR calculations for the project pursuant to allowances under the San Antonio Precise Plan. The proposed project would transform the existing gas station site with more pedestrian-friendly uses and design. The project will implement the street design standards from the Precise Plan, which include wider detached sidewalks, widened vehicle and bike lanes along California Street in front of the project site, bike parking for visitors, and at the corner, there'll be a small public plaza with covered arcade that features landscaping, seating, and public art. The off-site and other onsite improvements will require the site's re-existing street trees to be removed. Those are shown in red dashed circles on the screen right now, and those will be replaced by nine new street trees. The project will also remove the four existing wide gas station driveways at the project site and construct a single narrower driveway leading to the underground parking levels from California Street. The building will wrap around the small ground-level entry courtyard, which provides common amenity space for future residents of the site and is oriented towards the lower-volume California Street frontage. The main pedestrian entry to the residential portion of the project is accessed through this courtyard area, while the commercial space has a direct entry to the San Antonio Road sidewalk. The majority of the onsite planting that you can mostly see here on the screen is in ground-level planters. There's also additional landscaping on the roof deck, and the applicant has already begun incorporating a large number of California native and drought-tolerant plants in keeping with the city's objectives for 75% native planting. While the site design prioritizes the creation of pedestrian spaces along public frontages, the building design also tries to create some visual interest along the commercial frontage at San Antonio Road. This includes a portion that has a zigzag glazing pattern, those textured materials that are applied in angular shapes and other bright pops of color. The residential portions of the building have a somewhat quieter appearance, using a mix of warm-toned wood siding and panels, as well as stucco to complement other residential developments in the area. There are two towers with angular roof forms and special siding details that are oriented towards the main project corner, and those are intended also to create a more special treatment of this gateway location. Staff has reviewed this design with the Development Review Committee and is recommending approval with minor design conditions of approval to refine a few key elements. Amongst the project 63 residential, sorry, 62 residential units, the current proposal includes 13 below-market rate units that would be affordable to low- and median-income households. This proposed mix of affordable units makes the project eligible for a 50% state density bonus, which is the maximum that's allowed for the project under state law. And this mix also complies with the city's BMR ordinance with application of the requested state density bonus concessions. These concessions are proposed by the applicant and create actual cost reductions to provide for the affordable housing costs of the project per state density bonus law, and the six waivers or reductions of Precise Plan development standards are also necessary to physically construct the density bonus project. As I noted earlier, this project includes those discretionary requests for provisional use permit and FAR exemption, and staff is recommending approval of those requests as we've found that they provide for a better-designed density bonus project in accordance with the overarching goals of the Precise Plan for land use, active space, and open space. All of those project components are discussed in more detail within the staff report. Staff prepared an initial study of environmental significance for the project, which found that it would not cause any new or substantially more severe environmental impacts than have already been analyzed in previously certified environmental documents that cover the Precise Plan area. This slide has the full staff recommendation, and that concludes staff's presentation tonight. City staff, as well as our lead super consultants from Ringcon, are available for any questions that the EPC may have, and the applicant team is also here tonight and has a presentation. Thank you.
Who will be speaking from the applicant?
I think leading off will be Mircha, who I see has been presented already.
Yes, I saw that we have Brent. He's going to pull the presentation. Brent, are you going to pull the presentation? Or is it going to be on the city side?
Brent should be able to do that.
Oh, I can do that? Okay. I wasn't sure how it worked with different audio. Can you guys see it?
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Planning Commissioners. My name is Mircha Vazcarisian. I am the co-owner and applicant for this project. First, I wanted to emphasize and thank Rebecca Shapiro and Public Works city staff that helped us to achieve this goal, to be in front of you tonight after about 15 months of work. And I know that everybody put a long hours in on a very challenging project. Our goal and strategy for day one was this project to transform a pass-through gas station into an attractive destination. It's an all-electric building, and this development, we believe, is going to strengthen the neighborhood retail with, along the San Antonio, and in the process is going to offer 62 condominium units for families in the Mountain View that would want to have ownership, since, as we understand, there are a lot of apartment buildings, and this will be a condo-for-sale type of product. I also wanted to move quickly, because I know I have a very limited time, to the BMR. Yes, slide, thank you so much. This project started with providing option one, which is 13 BMR units with 11 low and three moderate. And in the process of, in the last couple of days, we were made aware of more guidance from HCD, which we provided Rebecca with the letter, and also it was aimed in another public comment, similar, that this AMI requirement policy by the city might be something that the city will have to look into, and that's what we came with option two for the project. Option two, basically, what it does, it's offering 10 BMR units, but it gets rid of the concession that will allow us to do unit mix kind of going from two bedrooms mix to less two-bedroom mix and offer more one-bedrooms, like in option number one. We emphasized the points that were done in the letter, which is a letter from HCD as part of the public record, on the bullets point below on this presentation. So, our understanding is that the state, it's not encouraging cities to have an AMI requirement to get in 100%, and in the process, to be able to lose the opportunity to have more lower units, and in the process, to have actually a better mix of units. In this case, for option two, it will be actually a gain to the city of the two-bedroom, two-bath versus in option one, when we exercise our concession. I'm sure Rebecca can provide more background, and of course, we have the letter, but I know I have limited time, so I'm sure that we would like to see if we can open it for discussion, and eventually, if the planning commissioners will decide to consider one of the options or both of the options. We definitely wanted to take the opportunity to have been referred and recommended to City Council, so they can also have the opportunity weigh in which option they would like to proceed. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah. So, for those people on the phone, just the way this process works on a hearing is, we open it up for EPC questions first, then we open up for public comment, and then bring it back to the EPC for discussion. So, at this point, are there any questions from Commissioners for either staff or the applicant?
Excuse me, Chair. It looks like they weren't done with their presentation. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, if it's okay, can we present for a few more minutes?
Yes, I misunderstood. Sorry.
Okay. I mean, I know Rebecca did a great job of summarizing the whole project in three minutes. She did a great job. Just wanted to reiterate what she said. There's a lot of development going on in San Antonio right now, some beautiful, large-scale projects taking place, and really, our goal was, along this red arrow coming into town, was that this really is a key element that greets people as they come into the San Antonio District. The main thing that I'd like to show with this project is, we really tried to open it up to the street corner to provide that plaza that Rebecca spoke about, as well as provide a residential courtyard that greets people, kind of safely gets people away from the hustle and bustle of San Antonio Road and greets them on California Street. This was a design diagram. There's a lot to it, but it's helpful to walk through. You can see here, we really felt that one of the key points was the Gateway Plaza here at the corner. Then, the Gateway Tower really kind of angling up at the street corner to announce this project. This courtyard kind of carves into the building, and we felt that having a secondary tower really reinforced this element. The residential courtyard really provides a special place for the residents here, and kind of lets people know from the street there's something special going on here. We like how, at the roof level, there's a roof terrace with a glass railing that visually really ties the two common open spaces together and provides views toward the San Francisco Bay. Then, along San Antonio, we made sure we positioned the retail door so it's readily seen from the corner, calling people in. We angled the glass. It goes back and forth, and that was to really reward the traffic as it goes on both sides, in both directions on San Antonio, so you see varied reflections. Even the columns have different patterns on them, so you get a different experience traveling in both directions. A lot of Rebecca and the staff were very pleased with this angular pattern that took place here, and so there was a lot of effort to try to integrate that into more components of the building. So, ways that that was done was, the canopy over the arcade has angles to it, and we brought the angle up through a wood pattern so that it starts to bring that playfulness to the project. One of the main things we tried to do with the addition of the fifth floor was to minimize it, so it stepped back and has a darker color, calling attention to the second, third, and fourth floors with these framed elements. We also, where there were balconies at that level, we used glass to help minimize the appearance and try to bring the scale of the building down. Then, along California, there was an effort to put the garage entry off of California Street, farthest away possible from the busy street intersection. We have two exit stairs out of the garage for people to come to the retail, and we brought some of the angular playfulness to those exits so that people could feel connected and reminded to head towards the retail. And, well, that's what I'll say for that slide. We spoke about this slide already with the courtyard here and the arcade and retail on the first floor. There's a lot of trees planted along the sidewalks. There was a lot of effort to make this building look good from all sides, and here you can see the white frames with the horizontal wood paneling running through the building, providing a nice rhythm and distinction for the living units there. We also, just right here, you can see some of the pop of color and some triangular patterns. Again, really thinking through how this building's experienced from the streets, day in and day out, and making it attractive at the pedestrian level. It's just more views. You can see, here's the garage. Also, there was an effort to integrate a core 10 steel finish into some of the site work amenities, just to bring some warmth and materiality at the human scale. Then, this is the back corner that faces the Bank of America Building and the Chinese restaurant here. Again, just trying to make this project attractive to all sides. This west side faces the existing residential apartments, so there was an effort to provide landscape at the roof here over the garage to soften that. It'd be pleasing to the neighbor just across this parcel. I mentioned some of the materials. There's a combination of high-quality materials. Park Lex ProDema is a natural wood veneer that's very durable, and also, on the balconies, we are proposing to use a Caboni wood rail that has a 20-year warranty maintenance-free, so that it will look good and provide a natural experience, both from the street and from a user, an owner perspective, when the materiality will be there as they come out to the decks to enjoy the view. So, this is just some views of the project. You can see there was an effort to really put a lot of trees. I'll let the landscape architect speak to the types of trees, and then some views around the building, just to give a sense of what it will be like to enjoy being around the building. This is from the corner, looking towards the retail. You can see here, around the residential clubhouse, we have an exciting pattern that's actually slanted. Again, it's visually trying to draw people towards the retail. This is the community room, so at nighttime, it'll be lit up and let the street know that there's life there. And here, you can see how the awning over the arcade has been angled to kind of, again, echo that feel. And then, through this, you can see how this courtyard fencing and landscaping really brings the amenities closer to the street to be enjoyed and offers protection and makes it a special place for the residences. Then, inside, let me make sure I didn't skip a slide. Inside that courtyard, there's a water fountain that will help, that's recirculated water, that will help to mask the noise of the traffic and provide an area for kids that they can play, run their crazy circles, invent new games and universes and play on this structure. Just another view of that area that it really provides a kind of a respite, a place of nature, and welcomes you into the residential portion of the project. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kevin for landscape. Hopefully, Kevin's here. Well, I don't see him on the list, so I will go ahead and present his part. Really, the effort here at the roof terrace was, it's an all-electric building. We provided electric amenities. There is no gas here. It's an electric barbecue here at the kitchen. Hopefully, Kevin will start taking over for me. I'm sure he'll represent it better than me. Living spaces, exercise bikes, again, all facing towards the San Francisco Bay with great views. Then, down at the ground level, I think he's just having trouble getting on. You can see, there was an effort to provide as many street trees as possible. Again, there was a lot of effort working with the staff to try to figure out how to get as many trees with all the utility lines running through the area. As Rebecca stated, we're at 75% native plantings for this project, and really, again, the effort was made to provide as many trees as possible for the project. So, again, just to iterate what Mircha said at the beginning, this project really does transform a fossil fuel dispensing pass-through gas station that's not very attractive into a gateway residential destination where people can own and live and really enjoy being in the city of Mountain View. Thank you.
End of the, before I jump on, is that the end of the applicant's presentation?
Yes, that's the end.
Alright, then we will bring it to EPC questions. Do any Commissioners have questions for either staff or the applicant? Commissioner Haymeyer?
Thanks. Thank you for the presentation. May I ask a follow-up question about the ground-floor retail? My understanding of the Precise Plan is that there are two purposes. One, either preservation of a local business or a nonprofit space. The option one and option two were shown pretty quickly. Is that one of the concessions that has changed, or would that remain the same under option two?
Yeah, this is Mircha. I can answer the questions. So, the retail preservation square footage, it's not part of any of the options. I mean, it's not something that we try, we want to have these 2,000 square feet retail. What we have, we have a waiver for adept in the retail space as part of our consideration, because what we can achieve on this corner, but the retail space, it's, I believe, about 2,008 square feet or about 2,000 square feet, and...
So, I misunderstood. So, it would be traditional retail, the waiver is for the depth?
The density bonus waiver, if I could interject, the density bonus waiver is just about the depth of the retail space. The FAR exemption is not connected to, for the commercial space, is not connected to the density bonus. This is an exemption that can be permitted separately through the San Antonio Precise Plan. So, it is the provision and the FAR exemption for the commercial space is not associated with the two BMR options that were presented by the applicant.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure about the concessions. And could we just go back to that slide with option one and option two? Can you walk us through that? So, it's concession three that goes away? So it's concession three that goes away, the BMR locations, right? An option two?
An option two, the unit mix, it's going to go away where it's allowed to have more two-bedroom, two-bath, three more two-bedroom, two-bath versus in option one.
Right. But the location, the clustering of them, does that change as well?
So the concession two, the option two also has the BMR location as one of the concessions.
Oh, I see. Okay. I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong thing. Okay. Thank you.
And if I could interject, I think at this stage, what the, what city staff at least has seen is merely the, I guess you could say that the top two-thirds of these two, of the option two, you know, we haven't had a chance to review with the applicant an actual series of floor plans that would show where the five one-bedroom and five two-bedroom units would be located nor to completely evaluate this, this option two in regards to the overall concession requests. The key differences between the options are in how BMR units are provided, both in the total number and the split between one and two-bedroom units. And depending on what we hear from the EPC tonight, as far as your recommendation is concerned, we would work more closely with the applicant to understand what that would mean as far as the overall density bonus requests that would be presented to council and provide our analysis to council based on that, that coordination with the applicant and EPC's recommendation tonight.
Thank you.
Krishna Gertjes.
Thank you, sir. Yes. So that, that ties into the questions I had in terms of the viability of the concession, number two in particular, and the placement of the units. I was going to ask you, based on the email that we received almost last minute yesterday, in the response, we see the developer say, we've got two options here. And then if these don't, if these aren't feasible, then there really is no, no option, right? It's not affordable to do the project. So my question for you was, have you have the time to then review that email and let everything sink in so that you can do an analysis for us? It sounds like you don't have enough time or didn't have enough time to do that. And so you'll do that for city council, right?
Yes, Commissioner, this was the letter from HCD that we put as a public record. It says dated September the 2nd. It was just made public very recently. I think it's a very detailed letter requested by City of Hollywood, West Hollywood, I believe. And it's very, in our opinion, again, it's, it's a very good guidance for the city where they basically point out clearly that cities that potentially try to have a policy around the AMI to get to 100% AMI will, will actually sacrifice the larger units, in this case, versus lower units, so that unit mix, actually, it's going to be impacted. So they were trying to basically say that 100% AMI weighted average should not be imposed by the cities as a policy. And that's what we would like, the commission, that's what we like, Rebecca and the city itself to actually study this. But we, we looked, we looked into it in the last two days a lot. And that's why this is kind of like a last minute consideration that we added it as an, as an, as an option to, to the project. So I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, it answers it in a way, right? And I appreciate your ability to share the information with us as fast as you could, right? So having said that, I'm going to turn to my team now, our team, and our city attorney and Eric and the team in general. Having heard what the developers just mentioned and what we read just recently, have you all had the time to be able to reconsider that perspective into the staff report's recommendation? Does this change that, any of that? And are there any intersections of mandates or prerequisites that we ask for with BMR units and AMI conditionings that interfere to the point where those two options that were given to us by the developer are really the only two options? Or is there a third?
Sandy, would you like to weigh in first?
Sure. I'll go first and others can join. Just to answer your last question first, Commissioner, what the city needs to consider are the requested concessions by the developer. So if the developer has two sets of options with respect to concessions, that's what we consider. The city does not come up with its own alternative concession suite of concessions. So there, there's only those two options. So we have had a chance to look at the HCD letter that we received yesterday afternoon. And I guess I would say that it's not completely clear how that HCD guidance to the city of West Hollywood applies to the Mountain View BMR requirements. We will be taking a closer look at it. I guess I would say that, that the letter, it doesn't necessarily mean that the city's program has, has issues. The letter says that this, that city, and I think this would apply to Mountain View, should be prepared to grant the request for a state density bonus concession to modify provisions of its inclusionary ordinance, especially ordinances that mandate the level of affordability of inclusionary units. So that's where the weighted average requirement comes in. So we do believe that, that this option two where would be an appropriate concession where the developer can essentially substitute the moderate income units that would otherwise be required under the BMR program with low-income units. And that's what they're proposing with the, with the 10, 10 low-income units as option two.
And so just adding to that and, and sort of summarizing it in a slightly different way, our initial assessment, although we have not had a chance to fully delineate the, the city of West Hollywood guidance and its ramifications for the BMR program here, our initial assessment is that either of the two options could be carried forward as an acceptable density bonus request from the applicant.
Okay. Just one clarifying point. You said that we can't consider it. From the notes you sent me, state law says that we cannot propose an alternative that only the applicant can actually propose concessions. Is that accurate? We cannot.
That's accurate. The city needs to consider the requested conditions of the applicant and can't substitute its own desired concessions.
Thank you, Commissioner Gertjes.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. Thank you, Chair. That helps out because I know having, trying to digest this and incorporate what we look at as prerequisites compared to what the vendor's looking at, and then having in, at the last second, come in with two options and support documentation of what's happened in another location with just a day or so notice, it's a lot to intake, right? I'm sure all of you can understand that. So I figured to ask the question. I'm sure other commissioners have other questions. So I'll reserve the rest of my questions until a couple of minutes. And thanks for helping me with my current question.
Krishna Dempsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And forgive me, maybe, maybe I'm a little slow, but I want to stand this point a little bit because I don't fully understand it. I want to understand better what is essentially option zero, which is to not accept any concessions on this particular point related to BMR. For Ms. Lee, is the city required to provide any type of concession in this case?
I can start off and Sandy, please, please jump in. The state density bonus law lays out the scenarios in which a, an applicant may identify requested concessions. And the number of concessions that a project is eligible for depends on the BMR mix in the density bonus project. The statute provides further guidance and limitations on the scenarios in which a city may deny a requested concession. And they're pretty tight. A concession has to provide identifiable and actual cost reductions to provide for the affordable housing costs. And, and we have found that all of the requested concessions meet that criteria. The only scenarios in which a concession cannot be granted by a city are if there's a significant adverse impact to health and safety, an adverse impact to historic resource, or something that is specifically contrary to state or federal law.
So let me repeat back what I think I heard because I want to make sure that I'm getting this right. It sounds like what you're telling me is that we, the commission, don't have a lot of latitude here to reject the proposed concessions. Are we, are we in fact, do we in fact have to decide between option A and option B as proposed to us?
At this point in time, what, what staff will carry forward is, is the recommendation of, of EPC. The project that we have identified, you know, findings and recommendations for is the original option with 13 bullet market rate units. And, and if EPC prefers the alternative option, then that should be made part of your recommendation tonight. And, and that's what will be, that recommendation will be carried forward to council.
Okay. If at some later point, before we, we start, you know, voting on any of these particular things, if the city wants to provide any additional clarification on precisely what our obligations here are, because I want to make sure that I understand sort of what we, I want to say what we can and cannot do. I just want to make sure I'm very clear when I'm at least giving my vote or my recommendation that I understand, that it is completely within like the proper bounds of what we shouldn't, should not be doing here. I want to make sure I get my job, my part of the job right. So if at some point, Ms. Lee, if you can help me understand perhaps a little bit better what my lane is here, that would be really helpful for me. Because I'm still a little confused about these options. And later we can, I have a couple of comments about how I feel about some of the concessions, but I want to make sure I get kind of the legalities here right. Then let me change and go to a completely pedestrian, different question that's far lower stakes. If the applicant can show me the plan for the, I want to call it, not the park, but the thing with the, the triangle that the kids went around. I'm actually, I just want to see a picture of it because I want to see the seating. So if that's something you can do, I appreciate it. I just want to, I want to eyeball how much seating you have in that common area.
Yes, Brent will pull that.
Two benches, maybe three.
Yeah, there's a bench here, bench here, some seating, a bench, and there's also a built-in bench here as well.
The, and this really isn't the time for comments, but I'll just simply say that if you have a retail that might end up being food of some type, food or beverage, you probably can have a lot of people working in tech that may be working from home. To the extent that you can have a few more spaces where somebody could actually put a laptop down and, down and work, you may actually find more activation in the space. That was it for me. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Just one more bit of information to be aware of. On the left-hand side of this, this area is the ground level community room in the very corner. And in that community room, Brent, correct me if I'm misremembering, does have, you can see there a nano wall, which allows the community room to open up and create a more expanded, become a more expanded part of this, otherwise, you know, smaller and more intimate courtyard area.
Yeah. And the nano wall door was designed so it literally opens up at the corner. So it just spills right out into that space.
Krishna Dempsey, no more questions at this one? Krishna Nunez.
Cool. I'll lower my hand. Awesome. Cool. So I guess a quick question for Sandra. With regards to HCD, for like, in terms of like their powers, let's suppose there's like a, a misbehaving city out there that is imposing like a 30% BMR, you know, inclusionary housing requirement in part of their, you know, zoning code. And a developer, you know, comes in and they want to, you know, take advantage of the state density bonus rights that the state has afforded them. And they show up and, you know, they try to get their project approved. And, you know, the 30% BMR requirement is extremely onerous. Their project gets denied. In terms of like seeking relief for that, is HCD like a quasi-judicial agency that would receive that case and then be able to make a ruling on that that has like an enforceable, like is, is, is enforceable by, by law? Or does, or is that scenario routed to like state court? Or is it possible for HCD to get that case? And, you know, if the developer doesn't like the ruling, are they then able to appeal to a state court? Or is that like the end of the matter?
So HCD is both a kind of a resource and an investigative and enforcement agency. So if a complaint is filed with HCD, they'll investigate it and determine whether or not there's a violation, an issue, that notice of violation. The, the applicant can also file suit if they're, if they believe there's been a violation of state law in improper denial of a project. And so there, that is also a separate avenue that can be taken. And yeah, and if there is, and if the, the city is determined to have violated state law, these housing laws, it could also be on the hook for, you know, costs and attorney's fees that result.
Cool. So in, in a dispute of the kind in that like scenario that I just described, would the developer, like if they went straight to file like suit in a, in, in like a court outside of HCD, would it be either likely or is there like a routing back to HCD? Would the courts essentially be like, hey, thanks for, you know, submitting this suit, but we're going to send it to HCD first and, you know, want to hear their thoughts on the matter prior to like engaging in this case? Is that like, what's your experience in, or, or, you know, what would be, yeah, like, what, how would you anticipate that happening?
No, I think if the lawsuit is filed in state court, then the court will not remand it back to HCD. So I, I think a lot of complaints are filed with HCD in lieu of filing a lawsuit because it actually doesn't cost money to contact HCD. And so that is a way to, I think, get a quicker and easier resolution, whether in favor or against the complainants. Because HCD doesn't always find a violation, you know, by the cities. So I think it's often taken as an initial step to see if the matter can be resolved that way.
Okay, perfect. And then as far as like, like judicial deference and all that stuff, like is it the case that because this is part of our zoning code and because the city, right, like cities, municipalities, like the police power, right, gets a lot of deference in terms of like development standard? And from my understanding, typically, these kind of like zoning and kind of like, you know, land use regulations, unless there is a strong identifiable, like case that can be made that the zoning standard is not, doesn't have a nexus with the general public good, that there's a lot, in terms of just risk management, right? Not in terms of like a yes or no here, but in terms of like risk management, right, the gradient in between. Risk management, right? The gradient in between. Would you say that? You know, the courts have displayed a lot of like. Like given that a lot of credence, given cities a lot of credence and their ability to exercise that land use police power?
I think in general, when the cities are exercising their police power, the, the courts do. Provide a lot of deference. I would say in the housing arena, the deference has been. Truncated a bit and so if, you know, for instance. There's a vi- a violation, a asserted violation of the Housing Accountability Act, the burden is actually on the agency. To prove by preponderance of the evidence that it hasn't, you know, violated that statute. So. It kind of depends on what the claim is, what the burden of proof is and what the standard of review is.
Okay, cool. Yeah, so that's, that's helpful. So the reason why I'm asking is because I did take a look at that letter. Look for it actually. The West Hollywood letter and. That court, I guess before actually going to that, so our zoning code section, what is it like thirty-six forty point ten? The, I guess, letter I, it says density bonus. Compliance with the provisions of this article may be applied towards a request for a density bonus. Provided that the affordable units meet the stricter of the BMR program requirements and the density bonus law. So that, that piece, compliance with provisions of this article. May be applied towards a request for a density bonus. Can, before I ask my next question, what does that mean? Can you expand on that a little bit?
Sorry, I mean, I guess it would help if I could.
I guess I'll ask the direct question then. In terms of like. Our, because the court case that they cite here, that HCD cites, the Latinos. Versus like, I forget what. My understanding is that that court case. Is in reference to a scenario where the, I think it was a county, but whatever, like the subservient. You know. Agency or government body, whatever, were requiring a additional. Right, amount of BMR units. Whereas. For, and if I remember this from like a couple EPC meetings ago, it came up as well with the question around like the concurrence of it. So my understanding is that. We do credit. Our BMR. Program does credit the developer for that ten percent. So they're not going above fifteen percent, right? It's not like, here's the ten percent you need to get the density bonus and here's our BMR. Or now in effect, you have a twenty-five percent BMR requirement. That's not our. BMR policy, right?
That's correct. They're not additive. They're inclusionary. Michaela from Housing Neighborhood Services.
Okay, cool. So then in this letter, it says, as described above. An inclusionary requirement of fifteen percent or less is not subject to scrutiny by HCD. So given that we're giving the concurrency. And we're capping it at fifteen percent. It says in this letter that HCD doesn't care about that.
I think that's referring to a specific. Issue, which is, you know, the fifteen percent BMR requirement is generally considered a safe harbor. And so I think in the West Hollywood case, they actually required, I think, twenty percent. And so it, again, it was specific to its facts and I think if, yeah, if you exceed kind of twenty percent or above, HCD may. Take a closer look.
But that's, that's some other city in Southern California. We're not requiring more than fifteen percent. The concurrency means that the developer is not being required. To provide more than fifteen percent in this case, in this case right here, right?
So the, I guess. The best way to answer that is that the city's requirement is, is fifteen percent for BMR. There are a series of other criteria that the BMR ordinance establishes that has some influence on sort of how and what BMR. Units are, are being proposed. So. Taking option one into account, what we have there is thirteen BMR units. Ten of those are specifically being utilized by the project to. Be eligible for a fifty percent. State density bonus. Seven of the BMR units are being provided to comply with the city's BMR ordinance requirements. And in that scenario, that includes. Let me see, it includes. Four, four units that could be affordable to low-income households and, and three units affordable to. To households earning up to one hundred and twenty percent AMI. So. Again, in summary. The, the city's BMR ordinance requires only fifteen percent. There are different units that are being included in the, the proposed project. Based on a. A combination of what the applicant is seeking to do and request through state density bonus law. And the affordability and other requirements of BMR ordinance.
Okay, cool, because. Yeah, I know what they're proposing. I guess like. What I'm trying to understand is they're citing this letter. Where it seems to me like the most important like fact being cited. Is, or relates to the percentage requirement, which in this case is twenty percent. Which is five percent above the safe harbor that we've established. Which makes this a completely different scenario. Because we're not requiring more than fifteen percent. And as of that, it also seems like in, in the staff report, it says that. The project does not comply with the equitable distribution requirement. That the. That the units must be distributed equivalently between like bedroom mix as well as. Through the like distribution of the location of the units. And so. If we're, if, if we are not requiring more than fifteen percent. And if this guidance or this letter. Is materially based on a fact that. The Santa Monica or West Hollywood is trying to require twenty percent more. Then I have a very strong interest in, in getting to the bottom of that because I don't want us to be beholden. To guidance. That for all intents and purposes, it's just not applicable to us. And so that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of.
And Sandy, please, please jump in if I, I misstate anything. I think, again, harkening back to some of the answers that we provided to earlier questions. Based on staff analysis, understanding that option two has come in fairly late in the game. We believe that either scenario. It has a basis for approval. Given the allowances of state density bonus law. So setting aside the letter of, of reference to the city of West Hollywood. You know, what you're, you're seeing here and, and again, we haven't had a chance to fully vet the need. Or which, which specific concessions might be necessary for option two. But looking at what the, the applicant has shown on the screen, staff's assessment is that. The original proposal. Which is what is described in this city staff report. Complies with state density bonus law and complies with the city's BMR ordinance with the application of allowable. State density bonus concessions. And we believe similarly that option two has the ability to follow that same path. And so one of the questions before the EPC tonight would be to make a recommendation that. Takes into account EPC's majority. Majority recommendation for the BMR proposals, the two BMR proposals that have, have been put in front of you by the applicant.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Ian?
Thank you. I know it's a lot to take in. I'm, my question actually jumps a little bit in topic. I appreciate that these are going to be condos. That's rare here in the city. As far as the sales go, I am not. Super educated in what is allowed in terms of being able to sell them. I. My, my fundamental worry is that they get sold to investors and it's not, you know, people who live and work in Mountain View that are purchasing them. And I know very often when condos are for sale, there's an HOA. So in the HOA documents, will there be some language that says there's only a certain number that can be? You know, purchased for rental right away or something along those lines? I don't know if you guys have gotten that far.
I can, I can attempt to answer part of that question. I think it's a little bit down the road, but. I, my experience, I, I don't know, between a couple of cities, Los Altos and Palo Alto is that. Those condos, they sell individually. It is no goal for sell them in bulk or anything. And we have. An assignment as part of the public benefit for the HOA escrow. Which is going to be something going towards the affordable units for any increases of the HOA for the affordable units over time. That the city help us arrive, that will protect affordable units, HOA increases over time. That's one item. Second item, the HOA and the CCNRs. They're not developed. This is. It's going to be part of the final map recording that has to be done. That HOA has to be in place, at least drafted at that time and eventually. Finalized. So. We do not have any of that. And as far as I know, you know, Rebecca can jump in. It, it, it's not a requirement at this time and we don't have any. More information of what it is. Our plan, it's of course, it's condominiums for sale from day one. That was. That's, that's basically our stand right now.
Okay, so yeah, just the HOA has not. Been flushed out completely. I don't know if there's a city ordinance or if there's any language from the city's point of view. That sort of takes a look at. That kind of thing, or if that is something that is just by right, the, the condo ownership or developer can determine.
Put that in, in, as far as a, a response, you know, the city has specific requirements for the below market rate units. That, that they're on occupancy. For the market rate units, I, I'm not aware of any city ordinance that, that, that mandates my, my experience. It's, it's not uncommon for HOAs. To include in our CCNRs a limitation on the number of units that can be rented, but. That's in my experience typically something. Kind of between the, the HOA and developer and the Department of State.
And one more, one more thing that I might add is that in general HOA definition, when they are done, they have a limited number of. Rental units that any type of investor can do. Or any, you know, it's a limited number of units that a HOA needs to determine by themselves. The owners, they have to determine, let's say we got sixty-two units with, you know, so many affordable. And then the rest of the market sale units, the owners have to decide. We are okay to have ten units in the building every year to be rented. Out and the owners will not leave in there. So there are conditions that are put by. The ownership of the, for market rate units into the HOA. Rules and regulations as that will be developed, but right now we, we not even have a draft for, for, for that.
I understand. Okay, thank you for clarifying. Yes.
Sandy, I don't know if you can jump in here. I was a member of an HOA that had a limitation on the number of rental units and, and it was two or three years ago. The State Assembly passed a law that prohibited. That rule from being enforced. HOAs are not permitted to set any limitation on the number of rental units in their HOAs. So there's, so even though it's in the HOA documents at the time, they are actually now prohibited by law.
I see. Okay. No, thank you very much for that. I was curious and did not have the information.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you. So given the concession and the retail depth, what types of retail, I don't know if you've gotten this far. Are, are probable or likely to, to go in? Just to give us an idea, just the regular folks about like what kind of stores, shops, services.
I, 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 we believe that will be very appropriate to be some type of like coffee shop. Or maybe coffee pastry shop, something like that. Of course, the space, it's only two thousand square foot, but he has a little bit of a patio and benches that the people can sit outside. We identified, I believe, as a blue bottle. Actually, we put that in there just because we just thought that maybe. There will be something that a blue bottle company might be interested. Since this is a gateway to Mountain View, it's a, it's a very important corner for retail. But that's the type of shop we think that will be probably appropriate. Not being that large either.
Okay, thank you. And I was just curious from staff side, I know the BMR units don't count. But what is the parkland dedication fee for this project at this point? For the market rate?
You're on mute, Rebecca.
I do not remember off the top of my head what the final estimate is. If you give me a moment, I can pull that up. It is in the conditions of approval for the project. So if, if anyone else has a question, if you have a subsequent question, while I, I double check. I can try to multitask.
Oh, thank you, Rebecca. One last one, and this is for the developer. Can you really see the bay from the roof deck?
Very good question. The answer is yes, from the fourth and fifth floor.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. No rush, Rebecca.
Commissioner Gutierrez, do you want to do your rest of your questions? Okay.
I have it in, in front of me. The current estimate of the total parkland dedication fee is. Close to two point eight million dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Real good discussion here. So I have a quick question here for our team in general, looking at option, what, what is option one? And the updated, I'll say updated, option two. When we look at the concessions and since, and Marsea, bear with me here, I'm new to the committee, so I've got basic questions I have to ask. Just to make sure I do my, my homework and due diligence right and make sure everyone's happy with the outcome as best as possible here, right? So, so continuing on with my question, when we look at the concessions, my concern is. The location of these units, right? I understood earlier that if concessions don't violate state or federal law, we should be fine. And in your opinion. The way things look like right now, based on what regulations we have with both BMR and AMI. And the request from the developer, whatever these two options end up prevailing as a majority viewpoint and supportive will be fine. But to double check. When we look at concessions and option two and location is a question. Are we saying then that these below market rate units can be placed all, all grouped together in a certain location? Or will they still be spread out? In other words, I don't want in the end to just have the adverse effect that if we do allow this to happen for whatever reason. That the end result ends up being that. You can tell what that BMR units, where, where they're at and who's there and why. And we don't want. Accidentally promote something of that type of negative environment in general, because I think that once you do that, then it. Well, I don't have to explain what that really means or what that looks like, right? So I just want to ensure that we're looking at that as well.
No, I just, to, to start things off, yeah, definitely, as, as you expressed, Commissioner Gutierrez. BMR unit location is one of the things that is discussed in the BMR ordinance and something that our, our housing staff looks at closely and, and works with. Developers to, to try to make adjustments to address. You know, I, I'll just, as a, a starting point, you know, indicate that at this point, we haven't seen a floor plan layout for. Where the BMR units would be located under option two. And so. And so, um, uh, I can only say at a very high level that. Um, because this project has a high proportion of two bedroom units. In a scenario that has a larger number of two bedroom units, there is the potential for and it's sort of a. An improved distribution within the, the project. One of the challenges with um, their original option as far as locations with eleven one bedroom units is that there are. A limited number of one bedroom units and the floor plans do tend to stack. So there'll be similarities or, or floor plans will duplicate across levels. Um, um. And Michaela, please jump in, I think the, the staff assessment as far as the BMR unit locations under option one. Is that it was close to being able to sort of meet our criteria for, for distribution, but. Um, was not quite there and, and that's why it appears as a concession request uh, in that scenario.
That's right Rebecca, we always work with the applicant to see if there's a possibility of distributing them as, as. Reasonably as possible throughout the development and once we saw, we see a proposal for option two, we would have the same conversation. But you know, I can't guarantee what the outcome will be having not seen it yet.
Okay, and then my follow-up question is, and thank you so much Rebecca and Michaela for your help with this, it's truly appreciated. Um, I'm learning as I go, so thank you so much, so uh, to our developer friend. Um, by when do you think you'll have a revised update of what option two will look like in terms of locations for these BMR units?
Um, uh, yes, so Commissioner, our goal is that, of course, uh, to be a win-win for the city and also for the affordable. Uh, pool of, of housing on option two where we offer three additional two bedroom to bath. And since this one, like everybody said, came in the last minute, we did not have the time to work on that in the last twenty-four hours. Um, what we would like to see if, of course, if the commissioners will, will agree. Um, it's that both options have to be available and on the table. And maybe potentially recommended to city council. Our goal, it's if the commissioners tonight decide that option two, it's something that they would like to see. Um, totally, our commitment is that we will start working with Michaela and Rebecca right away. Um, and actually putting that together. And I think in my personal opinion, seeing how, uh, you know, uh, we developed the initial BMR location for the option one. Of course, we get challenges for the one bedrooms because they are only in a certain area of the building. I think we can finalize it, I don't know, within days, in my opinion. I think this is going to be a meeting uh, between Rebecca, Michaela, myself and the architects. And uh, we can come with a proposal and then we can start looking at. Um, what will be appropriate also for the city. I think we already got the feedback from Rebecca on the two bedrooms of what the city was looking for. Um, some of the units that are a little bit larger, maybe a hundred, a hundred fifty square foot larger. But then the ones, we already got initial feedback of the direction that the city would like to see uh, those units, the two bedroom to bath. So we'll move immediately uh, to put that proposal together and the goal is. I think we can come up with a solution for option two pretty quickly and have that ready for, of course, for city council review. And uh, their decision uh, if it's a feasible um, option for the city.
Great, and, and my final point on this is, and I understand your perspective completely. Um, and the reason why these questions are being brought up is this because um, we're here to serve everyone in the community and make sure that everyone. Uh, has a fair shake in terms of opportunity uh, in these types of developments and who lives there and how they get there and where they live. And how that came about through a partnership between what you suggest and propose and, and, and our community in general. And we understand city council ultimately has the final say in all this, which is great. And we do what we can is make suggestions along the way, so I hope you understand, this is why we're asking these questions. It's not an attack on the actual development itself, it's more of, okay, this has been brought in, what can we do to figure out how we can get there?
Of course, a hundred percent agree.
All right, thank you, sir.
So, uh, some questions on my part, um, I'll do the simplest one first, um, Rebecca, in the staff, in the. Staff report, it said the current tree coverage is zero. It's going to six percent, but there are trees and I couldn't figure out how that worked, our street trees not included in our calculations?
Yes, and in this case, we, we did not count this, the street trees, they do have. A little bit of canopy, it is fairly minimal, but the street trees are currently located offsite and so, um, uh. To be conservative, they, they were not, they were not counted um, in either scenario, the existing condition or the project's condition. Um, and so i- in the same way that there might be minimal canopy from the three existing street trees. The nine new street trees are likely to over time create a little bit of onsite canopy. But again, um, the street, existing street trees are not counted in the existing canopy data. And the proposed street trees are also not counted in the project uh, canopy data, to be consistent with each other.
So, second question, um, my understanding from both the staff report and looking at the plans with the parking. With the parking in that first floor of the, the parking garage that's intended for use by the retail. There is no entrance to the retail space to either the stairs. That goes down to the parking or from the, from, or from the elevator, um, so two questions as there. Will that be changed as the designs refined, number one? And what would be done to prevent parking in the Bank of America lot? And people walking into this property instead of using the underground parking?
Um, of course, Brent, would you like to bring that up, uh, the garage level, um, to answer to the commissioner on that configuration? For the parking and retail spaces?
Actually, it's not that level, the, the one you had before, that is the one that matters to me. There's no entrance from the, either the stairwell that goes from the parking garage into the back of the retail space. Or from the elevators into that space and it would appear that if there's retail parking down below, if those people use the elevator. They can get into the residential portion of the building.
Yeah, the, the building will be regulated by access control, so the, the idea is that uh. People will be able to use the elevator to access the lobby. Uh, there can be potentially a door into the commercial, commercial space off the residential lobby. Uh, it was not shown, but there is that option for that. You are correct that coming up from the stairs, uh, you do have to traverse through the sidewalk to get to the space. Although there is an option here in this corridor uh, to provide access into the commercial. Uh, if that's determined to be beneficial to what goes in there, just from a security standpoint.
And then how are you, how are you work with any tenant to make sure that the people aren't parking in the, in the Bank of America lot?
Uh, there's public parking, so um. You know, people who use that commercial can be made aware of it by the, the retail's uh, tenant in that area. Um, in terms of, uh, so we've provided the option for people to park onsite.
Is there anything in the, in the, in the uh, documents Rebecca that says anything about?
Um, I mean, the, the product before us is, is on this site, um. It, it enforcement on private property is, is something that really is, is over uh, in, in PD's realm. But um. You know, typically, there are a few things that happen in, in scenarios like that. One, you know, the retail operator of, in the project sort of does, does what they can to um. To educate and encourage their customers to utilize the project parking, um. And um, you know, hopefully maybe in rainy weather, it'll be attractive for folks to use the underground parking garage, um. There is also often an, an onus sometimes on the adjacent neighbor to uh, to enforce on their own property. Um, and um, typically that's why you'll see signage um, in, in parking like parking lots like. Um, at the Bank of America that sort of cite vehicle codes and allow for them to, to call. Uh, call local enforcement to um, to ticket, um, ticket parking by non-customers on their, on their property, um. Uh, but in this case, the proposed parking for the project uh, is, is compliant with applicable regulations and um. And the zoning code does, does not say anything further as far as regulating um, offsite parking beyond um, the um. The conditions of approval that we have um, to bring something back to hearing and if possible, find conditions or limitations that. Um, can be placed to try to further discourage parking if or when problems arise.
Um, and then the other question is on the, the weighted average in the um, that was used to apply to their, to the. Current mix of units, um. The. Why, how is that, how is that used to come up with the number that it needed to be thirteen? And if you, and the mix that was there was uh. Rebecca?
So I thi- I think I understand your, your question, um, but. What the applicant uh, ended up proposing under option one is to provide three uh, three moderate income units. To pair with four of the lower income eighty percent AMI units. Um, that were being proposed as part of the density bonus package to try to meet the city's BMR ordinance requirements. Um, this is a small project and so fifteen percent of forty-one units is seven. So it's, it, it would, it would be a challenge for the project. Given the amount of low income, lower income units that are, are part of the original proposal to meet the weighted average requirement. But they, the, the applicant got close, I think they're at about ninety-seven percent as far as weighted, the weighted average is concerned. With the, with three lower income eighty percent AMI units and uh, sorry, four lower income uh, eighty percent AMI. And three one hundred and twenty percent AMI units.
And so under the option two, the weighted average would be eighty percent?
Yeah, the, the average would be eighty percent. That's correct. Because there would be no one hundred and twenty percent AMI units. So by, by point of comparison, um, and I don't know, let me just share my screen very quickly, um. There was a, a table in the staff report, um, which I modified to incorporate the alternative option. Um, to the knowledge that we had available, um, as I was working on this last night. So, um, you know, if you're looking at the, the differences between the two options. Um, the, the project proposal with the thirteen below market rate units, um, provides more BMR units. It has fewer two bedroom units than the alternate option and it includes units at both eighty and one hundred and twenty percent AMI. The alternate proposal includes fewer BMR units, ten versus thirteen, but it has more two bedroom units. But the units are only at eighty percent AMI. Um, and those are the key differences between the, the alternatives before you at a macro level. Um, um, and what we would be reviewing with the applicant. If EPC supports the alternate option is, is what that means as far as the specifics of the density bonus request. Um, but again, um, our preliminary assessment is that it, it has a path forward for approval under state density bonus law.
The density bonus law, that by choosing uh, ten units the previous way, their way on the, on option one. Met the density bonus requirement of eighty percent, by choosing different units, it met our criteria, is that correct?
Um, it, our assessment is that it would be potentially a different mix of concessions to achieve compliance. But that both, both would ultimately be able to be determined compliant with state density bonus law and our local BMR ordinance.
And for apartments, what is our weighted average number?
Um, it, there, I believe there is, is not a weighted average for rental, but Michaela, please chime in.
So for rental apartments, it's a weighted average of less than or equal to sixty-five percent AMI. And for ownership, it's weighted average of equal to hundred percent AMI.
Is it sixty-five for apartments?
For rentals, correct.
Thanks.
And it's, it's less than or equal to with rentals.
Okay. Right, any other questions from commissioners before we open up to public comments? Okay, all right, um, where is Brittany, there she is, all right, um. So we will, uh, at this point, open up to public comment. Uh, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves with star six, EPC clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. Um, Ms. Whitehall, do we have any attendees wishing to speak on this item?
I do see two hands raised, we have the Giovanni Odolini Norcal carpenters going to share my screen quickly.
Be your medical phone.
Minor technical difficulty, looks like. I need to pull up an alternative timer very quickly, if that's all right, just give me one second. Okay, thanks for your patience, um, Giovanni Odolini Norcal carpenters, go ahead.
Nina, you're able to hear me okay?
Yep.
Wonderful, uh, my name is Giovanni Odolini, I am a field rep for the San Jose Carpenters Local Four oh five. I represent over seven thousand hardworking men and women in Santa Clara County. We are in desperate need of more units of housing in Mountain View. We have more homeless than ever in our community and an article in the San Jose Spotlight last week stated. The Santa Clara County is facing the worst housing crisis in the nation. However, time and time again, when there are discussions regarding specific developments such as this one. And the impacts these developments will have on the community such as traffic, aesthetics, density and other very valid concerns. I rarely hear any mention of the economic impact these projects will have on the blue collar workers that will build them. We need to have a very serious conversation about adopting labor standards to prevent the exploitation of these skilled carpenters and apprentices in Mountain View and Santa Clara County. At a time when we are experiencing forty-year high inflation, record fuel costs. And the average home in Mountain View is just over two million dollars. It's our duty to be a voice for the overlooked blue collar men and women of Mountain View and Santa Clara County. That are struggling to stay afloat in one of the most expensive areas in the world. We must include strong language that require area standard carpenter wages, healthcare and a commitment to hire local carpenters, including apprentices. Apprenticeship programs give those without the opportunity to attend college, the ability to acquire skills that lead to good paying jobs and a shot at the American dream. Anything less than area standard wages, healthcare and opportunities for eager apprentices is unacceptable. I would love to have an opportunity to provide further input on this critical human component of this project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker.
We have Jane Pott, go ahead Jane.
Hi, yes, thank you, um, I just wanted to, I don't, I, I certainly approve of development and housing and think that we need to move quickly. So just to put that out there as context, um, however, I just really want to. Um, not gloss over the fact that the BMR options presented as we discuss this. And let's just be very honest about what's happening, which is we're like children here being given the option of peppermint or orange toothpaste. When we didn't want to brush our teeth in the first place and when I say that, I mean, neither of these proposals are compliant with our requirements as they are. And that's clear, can you say option one and two are both compliant with income level? Can you say option one and two are both compliant with income level requirements? No. Can you say that both are compliant with equitable placement? No. So just as context for this conversation, if we can be honest that we have been presented with two noncompliant options and we're being asked to pretend that the premise at the end of the day is you're accepting our premise that this isn't, that you're going to have a noncompliant option. So I think we should keep moving forward. I do think we should build, so I'm not even coming out against this, but it feels dishonest and it erodes trust.
Correct. Yes, the men and women overlooked in these projects.
Hey, Giovanni, it's my public comment time, but I agree with you on that. I actually agree with you very much on that. Absolutely, Giovanni. Also, please don't look over the men and women that are working on these projects. I would concur. All of that said, there's a lot of people who are not pro-development like I am, and when developers kind of pull things like this and pretend there are two options like this, I think it erodes trust when we need to actually be building community trust that we can move things forward and move them quickly. And this is what slows down development is shady stuff like this, and that's what it feels like, is very shady and not honest. And I don't like when a developer is treating us like children and asking us to accept a premise that is very dishonest at the end of the day. I also agree with Giovanni that, of course, we need to make sure we're protecting our labor, so I'm kind of glad he was unmuted because absolutely. But yeah, I would just like to say the context of this conversation is which noncompliant choice do you want, and let's keep moving. Please do better next time.
Any other speakers?
No additional speakers.
All right. We'll bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Who'd like to go first? Chris Gutierrez and Krishna Clark raised their hands at the same time. We haven't heard from Krishna Clark, so maybe maybe I'll give him the chance to speak first here. Krishna Gutierrez, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to go. So look, I could talk for a long time about some things that I I don't like either in in state law or in or in even some of our local policies that haven't been updated for a while. But the fact is that what we're being asked tonight is to evaluate this project against what what exists in the regulatory framework today and whether or not I know it's not fully compliant, but whether or not it's it's reasonably compliant and and the concessions and exceptions that are being requested are reasonable and reasonable enough for the project to move forward as staff has recommended. So just at a high level, I want to start with the good. Let's not gloss over the fact that we what we have proposed here are, one, what will hopefully be reasonably, you know, stacked flat condos, which we've been hoping to get more and more of over the last several years in the in the city. And we've tried to put policies and incentives in place to to get to get those. We're not displacing any residents. We're replacing a gas station, which and and on top of that, we can I don't think anyone can claim that this will result in more traffic than a gas station would. So we're actually, you know, reducing our transportation impacts by doing this, cleaning up the environment and providing stacked flat condos and more entry-level housing, plus we're getting inclusionary units, which we haven't had a lot of in on the ownership side in Mountain View. So also, I think it's a very well-designed project. You know, I I I'm not sure. You know, if it if it were me, just making the decisions, I I would have I would have allowed, you know, maybe a concession for one additional story to allow some additional BMR units and and a better mix. But but I understand that what they requested now is is an exception to height to begin with, let alone to go for another story. But the 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 only concession that really concerned me was so I, for those of you don't know, I live in a in a small condo complex, and it was one of the first to have inclusionary BMR units in it. And so I've seen firsthand, you know, how the 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 community that the the community within that building has benefited from from those folks being there, from the units being a mix of different bedroom counts and in different parts of the building. And really, no one there can tell, you know, knows which units those are. And and, you know, everyone is is, you know, everyone feels like they're they're part of that community, that small community that we've we've built there in that small condo complex. So I think my and and I I want to say I I get that this is a this really is a small, challenging footprint for a building to be on. And condo complex of forty-something units like it's being proposed here is is pretty difficult to lay out in a compact area like that. So I understand the challenges. And just to cut to the chase, I think the the one thing that I would, I I agree generally with staff recommendation. I won't go into all the all the thoughts that I have about some of the more minor things about the project because I think the the ship has generally sailed and and this is probably subject to permit streamlining. But I do, I do think that I I would be willing to trade the the three units for a better unit mix for more two bedrooms, especially in this particular area where, you know, we'll hopefully someday have a school site across San Antonio, where I think folks who, at least in the complex that I live in, folks are 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 raising families there in in a two-bedroom setup small families. And so to the extent that the second option works, I'm willing to trade the three units for the better mix or for the the additional two bedrooms in the in the mix there. The only thing that I would ask is I I hope that when when we sit down, and it sounds like the applicant is willing, you know, is working in good faith here, if if staff and the applicant sort of look through that option between now and when it's presented to the city council, look at where the units are generally located. I think what I really want to avoid is, you know, if there's a if the floor plan is such that or the floor plates are such that all the two bedrooms are on, you know, end up on a single floor or a single side of the building or or, you know, the basically the the BMR units are are somehow not as spread out as we like in addition to having the the greater mix of bedrooms. That would concern me and and sort of make me lean maybe a little bit more the other way as as in as I am to have a whole bunch of one-bedroom BMRs. But anyway, I the the overall summary of of my comments is I I I agree with the the overall staff recommendation with the the concessions and exceptions that have been proposed to make what I think will be a a high-quality project, get us some much-needed housing, replace a gas station, add some retail. And and I would as part of that recommendation give some weighted preference toward option two, as long as staff and the applicant can work together and staff gets comfortable with the the locations of those units and and maybe present both options to council. I don't think we should preclude council from considering both options one and two. But I think the the recommendation, I would recommend that our recommendation be to the city council that option two is generally more attractive as long as the details can be worked out.
Krishna Gutierrez.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chris. I I agree with what Commissioner Clark has mentioned. I mean, the fact of the matter is, there's going to be a school site there across the way pretty soon. And to have an increase of two-unit residencies in that section makes a lot of sense. So between one and two, I'm varying towards two. Overall, though, I I strongly believe that SDG architects, hey, man, this is your time to shine. Work with us to place these residencies in areas where it's not obvious that people are in BMR units. That's the big challenge you have, and I'm sure you can meet that along with a developer, because if you were in those shoes, you want to be, you wouldn't want to be identified like that. This is common courtesy. But the other thing is the relationship between how these ideas are brought up to us and what we can review. You know, some people have said it looks kind of shady. I I don't know if it was shady or not. All I know is it was last minute. And when last-minute changes happen, I understand because I used to work in law and 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 in those moments, you've got last-minute cases that come up and you use those as case law examples, exemplars, per se. Send them into the court, they review them, and then they decide the letter of the law and the case that they're looking at. In this case, it's housing, and that's the challenge. Because the way the laws are set up right now, there's not not, there's not much we can do to be able to regulate and do oversight. We can't actually make a suggestion as to what we think should be done. But we would appreciate getting the heads up of these types of changes sooner rather than later, because then it feels a little more adversarial. And I don't want to have to deal with that because I'm sure that's not what the intended developer is. But to the rest of the world and how it looks like, man, it doesn't look good because it puts puts us in a position where we're locked in a corner with no way out really in terms of deciding, well, is option one better than option two? It comes down to square footage. That, you know. That makes no sense. So based on what we have, I agree with Commissioner Clark. I would go with the two-bedroom option that's available to us in option two. And in the future, I hope that we get these updates sooner rather than later so that we don't have a misunderstanding that just, you know, stalls the growth of Mountain View and the opportunities of housing that exists or could possibly exist for everyone's benefit here in the city. Thanks.
Commissioner Nunes.
Yeah, so like the interesting thing, if I was observing myself or this meeting from like a bubble outside of my own being, is that I'm really pro-housing. I'm really pro-development. Story, I don't care about four or five, start like seven, I don't care. And I think we should build and should build faster, and I think we should build equitably. What have we as a commission, what has the council for like for the last two years, a year and a half with the housing element? What have we been talking about? Affirmatively furthering fair housing and ensuring that there is sufficient housing for all income levels. And there's a reason that we have laws and regulations on our books, on our municipal books. When the BMR was, regulation was updated, it had, I think it was two years ago, it had broad support from the people on council at the time. In fact, I think Commissioner Clark, you were on the council when you voted for this BMR regulation. And so there's a reason why we're implementing these regulations. And these regulations are, if you look at our performance in the latest housing element update, that middle-income housing is is just garishly the worst performing of all the income levels in terms of housing production. This is not about like comparing the value of a very low-income unit or a middle-income unit. No, no, this is about us having regulation, the city exercising its powers, its legislative power to look after the well-being of our city. And so when the developer comes in here and presents two options, option one, you don't get to comply with your requirements for an equitable distribution of placement of the units, and you don't get to comply with equitable distribution of the bedroom size because it would impact our ability to make more money. And yes, I know that the developer is saying, oh, you know, it'll make it unfeasible. Have have we, I don't know, have we seen the pro formas? Have we seen that? I would want, I would want to see that play out. I would really want to see that play out. That this is like really upsetting that we have these two options. Oh, option two, like ten units, you get less units. Oh, but we'll make the concession that will comply with your equitable distribution requirements. I'm extremely pro-housing. I'm extremely knocking down barriers to making our state more equitable in terms of housing. But this is not, this is not the trust-building steps that our community is expecting us to take, to allow developers to come in here and not comply with the laws that we have on our books and cite a letter from HCD from West Hollywood with completely different material facts. I'm not finding that to be a at the very least palatable. So definitely, no, I am not supportive of option two. There's no way I I could in good faith get behind that because I don't think that option was presented to us in good faith. And I'm disappointed about that. I might, I might get behind option one, but honestly, like just the way this has all gone down, I I I'm asking all of the commission here to just consider the value of our regulations, why we're putting them, why our council, why our elected leaders are putting them on the books, why some of us have literally voted to put them on the books. So, yeah, I don't know. I really don't know.
Okay, Commissioner Dempsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess in the in the spirit of, you know, getting through the agenda tonight and wrapping things up, Arise Blower, I'll be brief. You know, Commissioners Gutierrez and Clark, I think, spoke very well and I found myself nodding along with with what they're saying. And I think they, what they had to say, I think represented very well kind of what I was thinking and how I was feeling. Let me just sort of simply say this. You know, I wasn't, when I read this, I wasn't thrilled to see that the that the unit mix wasn't proportional and that the project was not evenly distributed throughout the the entire project site. There may be some justifications for that, but I feel like they really weren't well explained. And so I think perhaps there was a bit of a framing problem here, at least for me, because the the justification for what appeared to be saying, well, we're 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 not really going to follow the BMR ordinance here. The justification was pretty thin, and it felt like it was a little bit of, well, because it's a little too expensive, we don't want to pay for it. I'm sure there's more to it than that. But but I haven't really heard it. And so that that's probably the underlying cause for why I had a bit of bit of discomfort, I think, about that part. You know, I I didn't say this upfront, but I I do think it's important. I actually like the project. You know, it's general, it's general plan and and bonus law compliant. It's it's the right neighborhood for building a building of that size and the type. You're going to have way more trees. It'll be all electric. You're going to have ground floor retail, and it's ownership units, and ownership units are great because that's not only housing, it's wealth generation. I love that. We need more of that, right? So don't let what I said at the beginning kind of take away too much from all the good that that this project brings. There's a lot I like about this. But the the BMR part of this was not well-framed, and I think it just sort of hit a bunch of us wrong. And so my hope is is that the city can kind of take that discussion away and and sort of help it get framed better when it goes in front of the council so that it's, it really is a clear choice. And we understand sort of what 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 we have discretion in and what we don't. And since I guess I have to pick between option one and option two, little torn. I actually like option one because it's more units, which means more wealth generation. Option two doesn't appear to have the middle income banned, which we do actually have to, we have to start making progress on that. So frankly, I waffle. If I had to choose, I'd go slightly with option one, but I could have gone with option two, too. And that's enough for me. Thank you.
So that was a I was trying to keep score here. That's kind of undecided at this point. I'm option one versus option two.
I'm option one, but I'm sure somebody could talk me out of it.
Okay, good. Vice Chair Yan.
Yes, thank you. There are a lot of things about Commissioner Clark's statements that I do agree with. I'm not going to get too much into the positives. I'm hoping you guys already know, the developers know what the positives are, especially when you're asking for a concession on California, that you have that big break for the courtyard, and so the mass is not going straight up with a lesser setback. So I appreciate that. I think I understand the frustration that Commissioner Nunes has. I think it is not specific to this project. I think it is for a lot of projects. We don't have an idea. We have no data that supports what is feasible and what is not economically to have something done. So I think that's just in general an issue for us. We don't know. And again, as others have said, it is difficult when things are last minute. But given what's before us and that the state has imposed certain regulations that we cannot control at this point, I would, I would be for moving the project forward. I would, I would be for moving the project forward. As far as option one and option two. I don't have enough information to make a choice. I think it needs to be flushed out equally between the two and we'll let council decide. One thing I did note was that some of the BMR units, the one bedroom, there's one where the bathroom's not near the bedroom. Granted, it's usually the two bedrooms that might have a child and it's more important. I just think that's kind of eh, to have that floor plan. So if, if it does. Go, I'm okay with that. Um, just that floor plan. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hamer? Want me to go first?
I thought for you to go first.
Want me to go first?
Okay. So I spent a lot of time thinking about this over the weekend. So like Commissioner Clark, I, I like the design. Um, there's a lot of good things about it. The reality is the state bonus density law doesn't allow us great deal of flexibility. The court cases very recently, Commissioner Nunes have said that cities are allowed to ask for the performers, but they're not allowed to ask for. Why and how those calculations were made. Simply they have to provide their numbers. And the ruling in the court was that the law does not give jurisdictions the authority to actually look at. And just, and required justification for the financials that have been provided and Sandy can. Do that if she thinks I'm wrong, but that's, that's what I read is that we can ask for the numbers, but we can't actually look at details. So when I look at what we have, the developer has said, this is what I need to make the project work and he's looked at concessions. And the state bonus density law says that they can ask for those things. And so I'm, as I look at it, it's like, okay, where's this project? Who is, who is going to be living in this area? Uh, what's in this area? And what's the best thing for the area? And. The location is exactly where we want housing to be. It's near transit with close proximity to Caltrain and close proximity to the VTA state, the VTA main bus. Location over on the other side by the Walmart. It's a very job rich area. You've got large Facebook sites. You've got Waymo on the other side of the, of the highway. You've got all kinds of retail and, and work. Opportunities in the area. There's plenty of access to groceries and, 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 uh, and drug stores, the kind of amenities that you want to have nearby. And but one of the other things that makes this somewhat unique is I, I lived in the crossings initially when I was out here and. Crossings like this is part of Los Angeles School District and all due respect to my fellow commissioners who might have a. Have experience with Mountain View Richmond. Every person that moved into the crossings when I was there was moving in because they wanted to go to Los Angeles School District. That's why they moved there. They were families moving into the area. They wanted to have access to those schools. When I rented my townhouse out, the person that I, the people that I rented it to. Stayed there for six years so their daughter could go to Los Angeles School District during that entire time. And when they left and I eventually sold my town home, the people that bought it, bought it because it was in Los Angeles School District. So as an education area and I look at the kind of people that are, that, who would, who would benefit from that kind of thing? Children are not going to live in one bedroom units. They're going to live in two bedroom units. I understand, you know, I, I read the, the developer's letter and it was. A result of the response to the legal workers letter and their letter was, I thought was. It was not quite as passionate as mine would have been, but it was pretty darn close. And so I look at it and say. What's of the things that are most important to me is that the, the weighted average mix is that the. The not, the type, the type of the units, where they are. In my mind, the type of units are the most important because this is an area where I hope that the people that move in there are families. And right now, the, in the, in option one, the middle income units are where the two bedrooms are. The, if you look at our community, the people who are, who are in lower income levels and less fortunate. Are people in, in ethnic minorities and those ethnic minorities in general, if you look at data I saw, found said that. That the Hispanic community in general has more people living per household than others do. And so, okay. If I want to give some benefit to access to those schools and those other benefits, then in my mind. The two bedroom units are, are, are more important to me. I agree with Commissioner Clark that they need to be better distributed through the, through the area. I'd love to have more middle income units, but if I look at this specific project, the thing that to me, I think we need is. The, the two bedroom units of the people that can move in here, can come in here with kids that can, and can, can build their equity in this, but can also take advantage of something that's. Somewhat unique to this particular portion of the city. And that there's not a lot of other parts of Mountain View that are part of Los Angeles School District. And so I am in favor of the project, but I'm, I have, uh. I have come down in my own mind on the side of option two as a better option going forward because at the end of the day. Those are the people that I think can benefit the most from the collection of amenities in that area and. We all know I don't like the density bonus. That's not, 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 not a secret. But we got to work within the law and within those constraints. That's my view, so.
Commissioner, uh, Hamer, you would like the chance for a, go back to Commissioner Nunes or give everybody a chance?
Sure. I, I guess I, what I would say is I, I really appreciate the conversation tonight because I think reading through the staff report, reading through the letters, I have experienced every sentiment that has been expressed. Like Chair Cranston just shared, I mean, I think the people that we want to see living in this neighborhood and benefiting from the amenities that have, are going to come as a result of the San Antonio precisely in our families. In my ideal world, I think like Commissioner Clark said, I, you know, I would. Love to entertain an additional floor and see how we get to the ideal mix of what we want that satisfies both the city's regulations and. The density bonus. And I, I think that's what I would love. Those aren't the options that are before us. And so, um. Like many others, I think I would come down on option two i- if, if that's where we're going tonight, but. Commissioner Nunes, I, I share your sentiment. I, I know that this is not, um. This isn't the ideal circumstance. And so I don't, I don't know how to rectify that except if this is, if this, if the option is this or no housing, right? They're not. That's not exactly the choice that we want to come down with. So I don't know in terms of process and timing, right? Like. Whether there are, are real opportunities to go back. I think because of permit streamlining, I think this will likely move forward. But I'd love to, love to hear what else others have to say and happy to continue discussing what, what recommendation makes the most sense to move forward to council.
Commissioner Nunes.
Yep. So how many public hearings has this application or this project had since the application was deemed complete? I guess that's to staff, not from the developer.
This is public hearing.
I'm sorry?
This is public hearing.
Just this one? Or like how many, how many like times has this, is this, so this would be number one. So like. Is it true that like the state says that. A project once is deemed complete can only have like up to five?
So that's, that, there, there are different laws that provide a lot of overlapping process input. The, the law that you are thinking of. Speaks about the number of meetings that can occur. Uh, once a project has been deemed complete, that does not supersede other permit streamlining requirements for bringing. A, a project to hearing, uh, within a certain timeframe after which the project has been deemed complete. And environmental review completed. So, um, this, this project does need to continue to go through the hearing process.
Okay, cool. And then I guess like, cause one thing I'm thinking about is like, why, why are we even discussing option one and option two? Like personally, I don't feel that there's enough information. That, and, and I think I've heard even staff members repeatedly say tonight, like, hey, we haven't had a chance to assess. The merits and you know, like what that would look like. And so if there's streamlining requirements that are saying that this has to go. To council, you know, we, we aren't within our bounds to ask them to come back with 13 units that are compliant with. Mix and placement equity standards. Then is it also possible for us to just say, okay, cool. We recommend. This like project generally, but this whole decision around option one and option two. We're just going to like basically punt that to council, given that by that time, the developer will have done all the due diligence with staff. To flesh out both options. And then council can make a much more informed choice around option one and option two. Versus like us kind of locking council or boxing council into like one of the two options when we don't really have that full availability of information. Where, is there anything that would kind of prevent that?
I guess the short answer is, is no. And I, I think that I've heard that sentiment from sort of, I guess. Both sides is not the correct way of putting it, but you know, it, if I'm doing the counting and, and Chair Cranston, um, let me know if I, you think I've, I've counted incorrectly. Um, it seems like there is strong sentiment amongst the commissioners, at least four folks who, um. Favor option two for certain reasons, uh, over option one. But. Agree with what Commissioner Clark indicated, which is that. That recommendation from EPC, if a majority feel that way, should not preclude council from considering both options. And, and if that is indeed the final recommendation that comes from EPC, then, um, I think. That is, is similar to what you're suggesting, Commissioner Nunes. I think the commission could move the staff recommendation. For the project and say the same thing. There are a few different ways you could package it, but, um. I, I'm not hearing anything from commissioners tonight that says that you want to foreclose council. Through your recommendation, taking action on either of the options.
Right. And I, and the reason why I bring that up is because like, you know, framing is very powerful, like in terms of like rhetoric and discussion and. I feel like, you know, the developer has done a very good job at establishing a frame around option one or option two. And like, I just don't think I can support that. I, I would really like. You know, um, I guess I would like to elevate and or like raise awareness that, hey, like. If we could take a third option too, uh, or not to like also, um, which is, hey. Let's support the project. But. Totally like explicitly say not in our, our transmitter is powerful. If our transmitter goes to council saying we prefer option two, when. Both staff and the developer haven't had the ability and time to do their due diligence on that. I, I, I would like, or I would like to offer up for consideration a frame of supporting this. Project generally without supporting. The framing the developer has established on option one or option two, so that by the time this does get to council. All that due diligence has been established and they as like not appointed, like they're not being appointed, I'm appointed, but like as elected representatives. Can make that determination at a time around. With the fully fleshing out of information as unbiased as possible. From a choice where option two hasn't even been fleshed out. That's what I, that's what I could, that's what I could support.
Yeah. And that's almost, uh. Exactly what I was planning to, to propose as a motion, uh, except with maybe a little bit, uh, a little bit more information and context for council around the discussion that occurred. Around, uh, options one and two. Um, because you're, you're absolutely right, Commissioner. It's like, you know, option two hasn't been flushed out. And I think. What staff was really seeking tonight was, you know, here's the basic information that we have about this. It isn't fully flushed out, but do you have a, um. You know, an initial sentiment of like. No, this isn't attractive at all. Don't spend a bunch of time on it before taking it to council or yes, it is. And, uh, let's. Try and flush it out a little bit more and let the council make a decision. So, um, so I'll move the staff recommendation and, um. And on the, um, BMR options front, um, I would, uh. Also recommend that we, uh. I, in the, uh, in the report that's transmitted to council that, uh, that we indicate that, you know, the, the. EPC reviewed the two options, um, that it, uh, received that second option sort of, uh. Last minute and, and staff hadn't, and the EPC hadn't had a lot of time to, um, look into it, but. Based on the limited information that we had, you know, a, a slim. I don't, I, I was trying to count. I don't even know if it is a slim majority, but, but you know, some. Some number of commissioners, whatever the number was, um, indicated, you know, they would. They might be interested more in option two than option one, if, if the information they had was, was accurate and. The, um, the locations of the, the issue around the locations of the units, um, could be better fleshed out. And that, um, several commissioners, uh, I, I don't know the number also. Expressed support for either option one or, uh, we're, we're also comfortable with option one. And so at the end of the day, it really becomes a, a question for council, uh, because they'll have. You know. More information than we have today, but, but based on the limited information that we had, um. The commission was either sort of split or, um, slightly tipped toward, toward option two, but, um. Understands that council might have more information than we have at the time that they review this. I hope that made sense.
Kind of the four and they, they think it has merit, but needs more work. The neither category and two in the. A kind of like one better category was what I had. Is, is what I had, was the count that I had. So. Commissioner Nunes, Commissioner Dempsey in the leaning towards one, Commissioner Yan in the. Neither, neither category and the other four commissioners in the, we think there's merit in option two being explored further. For council to see them both.
Okay. Rebecca, do you have that, that count down?
So my, my count was, uh, uh, four commissioners, uh, favoring as Commissioner Clark. Described and characterized option two. Uh, I had one commissioner, uh, as slightly favoring option one, but persuadable and two, uh, commissioners neutral.
Okay. I thought Commissioner Yan was favoring, favoring one over two.
Can, can you state who they were just so that they can confirm that that is their position?
Yes. Uh, so Switzerland, uh, neutral was Commissioners Yan and Nunes. Option one, I had Commissioner Dempsey and, uh, option two, I had Commissioners Clark, Gutierrez, Cranston and Hamer.
Does anyone? Object to that characterization? Okay. Then please clarify your position.
Yeah, yeah. So. My, my position or what, and I guess this is in reference to, I guess, point of clarification to also Commissioner Clark's. Proposed motion, um, which is that. What I'm putting out there for us to consider explicitly is. In the official motion or what have you. To say we back neither option. We are literally going to. Leave it up to staff and the develop, and, and the developer to move all this information forward and bring it to council. And then they can decide as part of that motion. Cause like in terms of. Like if we give meeting minutes and all that, and it just comes out and emerges that like, okay, well, like four people, but if we're like explicitly taking a straw vote. Or like a poll and saying four commissioners, this, two commissioners, that, and like that. That's, that's a vote. That's like essentially like going to frame the council. Meeting from that vantage point. So what I'm throwing out there. Is, I don't know if it's like a motion or what have you, or point of clarification to Commissioner Clark is, hey, let's explicitly state or let's explicitly vote on. Backing neither.
I, I'm uncomfortable with that because I think it denies council. A pretty clear set of facts and information that is on public record. Um, and I personally, if I were a council member with the limited information that I have. Before me tonight, I would still lean toward, um, option two. And, uh, you know, if, if someone, uh, if there are four votes to, to. uh, if there are four votes to, to um, you know, supersede that motion, that's fine, but I, I think the council deserves to, to know that if there are four commissioners who would generally lean toward option two, based on the limited set of information they have today, I think the council deserves to know that.
Perfect, cool. Then I agree with that unless there's like three other people that would agree with me to explicitly make a, like, it state, hey, the vote, none, then I would, then I do agree with that characterization. I am like neutral, Switzerland, yes.
Okay, so Sandy, I think, is what Commissioner Clark said sufficient as a motion? The way he kind of presented it, or am I, is it too vague? I mean, he said he was gonna kind of put out there the motion, and I'm I think we had a, it, it's, if it is, then it should be a second and me, and we, and we're discussing about moving ahead with that. Is that was that definitely clear, Sandy and Rebecca, that we need Commissioner Clark to kind of state it more explicitly, or? Andy?
Can we just restate it now that we've had a lot of conversation about it? Um, just one more. You, you're removing the staff recommendation and then with respect to the BMR piece.
Yeah, so it was moving the staff recommendation and then including uh for the, for the BMR piece, just stating that, you know, making it clear that the EPC had limited information at the time that reviewed it, but um, but, but then listing the breakdown that you had, you know, for uh, uh, four commissioners generally um, uh, uh, felt that option two uh or, or favored option two based on the information they had, um, and then the other breakdown, which I've already forgotten, um, but, but also stating that, you know, the EPC felt it was best for council to consider both options with the additional information that they'll have between now and then.
Okay, and then I just.
Not denying, not denying them the ability to, to uh consider either one.
Okay, and then that was one commissioner who was generally more in favor of option one and two were neutral.
Right, okay, so is there there a second on that? Commissioner Dempsey, were you questioning that, that rating, that ranking, or the way it was rated, or?
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna flip and go with Chris. I thought that was a reasonable uh, uh, summation. I'm good with it.
So for, you're still in, in, more in favor of one, or you're?
I mean, you know, I like bedrooms, and if there's gonna be a school right there, I think that that's compelling, so I'm, I, I'm just gonna go with Chris. Add me to the list.
Okay, so there are five commissioners who are generally in favor of option two and two are neutral.
And I think Commissioner Gutierrez was ready to raise his hand to say, he's seconding that as something for us to discuss. That correct, Commissioner Gutierrez? Yes, okay. So we have a motion on the floor. A good cheer, let's go.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, so if there is a requirement for a second, which I don't think there is, but if there is, then I'll do the second.
Or a motion, yes, there is.
Yes. For Commissioner Clark's motion that he proposed just now and beforehand about twenty minutes ago.
Okay, Vice Chair Yan.
Uh, y- yes, I think Commissioner Clark clarified it much better to my liking initially, just framing it as I was neutral. I just wanted to put my sense in there to say I was not neutral on the ideas. My point was that the two ideas are not equally flushed out and should be flushed out and put towards counsel, which is different than saying, I find neither favorable. I find that there's not enough information to say it's favorable. And if that can be put in, I'm, I'm with it.
Are we good there, Sandy?
So yeah, if Commissioner Clark's statement in the motion includes that, I'm on board.
Five, one neutral.
I'm not clear on what you're saying. Um, so are you saying that, so i- i- you're basically trying to clarify what you meant by what neutral means? You're not completely neutral. You're just, you, you're not in favor of option two, but you don't have enough information to, to uh make a recommendation on either.
Correct, so from what Commissioner Clark just clarified, he is putting out the point that in the minutes, we will say that the EPC finds that there's not enough, enough information, that we're gonna put it towards council. But we can also say, as he says, that four people, given the limited information, find two favorable.
Five, okay, thank you.
To Nunez?
Yes, Commissioner Yin's or Vice Chair Yan's position is exactly mine as well. It's not about being neutral, not enough information. Exactly what she said, I, is my position as well.
Okay, understood, and we'll include that in the transmittal. I think we were just using neutral as a shorthand, but thank you for clarifying.
Any further discussion on this? Or we go ahead and put it to the vote? Okay, um, wait, how are you? There you are. Can you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Nunes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yan?
Aye.
And Chair Cranston?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously?
Everyone? Okay, so Sandy, do we, so I think we don't have to go through and read items one, two, three on the the staff report, right? That's kind of captured in what we just did, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I think the item agenda is the downtown precise plan update. Um, we'll start with a presentation by Edgar Maravilla, project planner, and Eric Anderson, advanced planning manager. Um, Eric, Edgar, there you go, you're up.
Thank you, let me go ahead and share my presentation. Good evening, commissioners, and members of the public. My name is Edgar Maravilla, senior planner of the city of Mountain View. And today I have the pleasure to present the draft updates for phase one of the downtown precise plan. I'm here today with long range planning manager Eric Anderson and the project consultants. Here's a quick overview of where the project started and where it is at. In twenty nineteen, city council approved the scope of work for the downtown precise plan to encompass area A, G, and H, historic preservation, development and design character, and ground floor activation. Since the approval of the scope, staff held several stakeholder meetings with developers, property owners, business owners, and neighborhood groups. Information gathered at the events was presented at two study sessions, one with the environmental planning commission in May of twenty twenty one and city council in June of twenty twenty one. At the study session, council directed staff to remove the historic preservation component from the downtown precise plan, directing staff to update the city's historic preservation ordinance for the entire city. This is a separate process that is currently ongoing. Council asked staff to update design standards, disallow office on Castro and side streets of area H. More information on the upcoming slides, and to conduct an economic vitality analysis, a high level review of downtown area A, G, and H. The goals of the downtown precise plan update are to provide clear design and historic design principles, provide objective design standards, encourage active uses that preserve the look and feel of downtown, and strengthen the pedestrian level experience. As mentioned in the previous slide, specific outreach was conducted to multiple stakeholders. In February twenty twenty one, meetings were conducted with business slash property owners, chamber of commerce, the development community, and neighborhood groups. In August and September of twenty twenty one, two open house meetings were held in person. In August twenty twenty two, the draft amendments presented today were posted online, and a presentation was given to the downtown committee. To encourage ground floor activation, and for the direction received at the June eight twenty twenty one city council study session, the downtown precise plan update would disallow administrative office on the ground floor of buildings fronting Castro and the side streets of Castro in area H. Existing administrative office would be allowed to continue. This change does not impact offices such as law firms, architects, and other local services if they are activating, only to apply to ground floors. Administrative offices would continue to be allowed on floors above by way of a provisional use permit. Area A, G, and H were updated to be consistent with one another. They now follow a similar flow. Uses were organized into charts, making them easier to read. Multiple figures were included, like the figure on the screen, detailing minimum requirements. And guideline paragraphs were converted to objective standards. Specific development and design standards now include area H to be allowed in maximum office FAR of two point seven five, that is floor to area ratio. Buildings will require character changes at least every seventy five feet. New historic adjacent standards. Buildings must provide traditional material and minimal window in front of design standards to strengthen pedestrian activation. A high level economic analysis was conducted. The key findings show downtown has desirable characteristics, but compete with a retail region that is mature and well developed. Restaurant and fitness uses are growing in the retail world, and downtown allows both uses. The findings also highlight the impact of the proposed standards. The proposed updates would not change feasibility of project slash updates, as many of the standards were previous guidelines which staff would strongly ask for. Now they will be required through development review process. Further, the economic analysis evaluated constraints and found that retail rents do not financially support building upgrades. Restaurants rarely financially support exterior building updates as interior upgrades can be sizable. The analysis also evaluated possible city interventions, which include improved the downtown environment, including nighttime lighting, more seating, open space, et cetera. Much of what is being proposed by the ongoing streetscape improvements and the outdoor pedestrian mob being undertaken by the public works department. The analysis is also recommending the city make a strong push and promote retail growth, something that could be further explored by the ongoing citywide economic vitality analysis being led by the economic development division. And overall, encourage upgrades and other complementary infill development. With that, here are staff recommendations. Thank you for your time. Staff and the consultants are happy to answer questions.
All right, so we'll open up the commissioner questions first. Mr. Nunez?
Cool, thanks. Um, so in terms of, uh, we, we received some comment, um, public comment on this that I found um pretty compelling, um, and I just wanted to check it out with staff. So in terms of uh, conditional use permits, um, and anyone that's currently in the ground floor um, for uh a conditional use permit allowing administrative office, um, is, what options do we have for um recommending that council? Uh, you know, gra- or basically not grant that new conditional use permit when the existing tenants leave?
So you, um, rights to particular uses and use permits uh generally go with the land. Uh, and in this case, the tenant space as it applies. Uh, so the council would basically have two options, could either um set a uh, um, council could either say that once a tenant's base is vacant for a certain amount of time, then it would have to revert to uh one of the permitted uses. Uh, or they could say that there's some amortization period, you know, thirty years or something like that, where all office uses would have to be phased out at some point. Um, in order to justify the amortization period, generally, we'd have to find some kind of um, you know, health and safety impact. It's not something that we do very often. Um, but we do have other non-conforming standards that basically say, once a tenant's base is vacant, then they can't go back to the non-conforming use. Um, so that differs from what the draft standards, the draft standards are, which say for office, that as long as um, the uh, there's a vacancy, it can be repopulated with office until it turns into a non-office use, and then it can't go back to office.
Perfect, and, and is that a common thing to find in our downtown core, that um distinction, basically, a lot of the current land or the tenants um using the site through a non-conforming use? Is that like a typical thing that we see?
Uh, no, there aren't very many non-conforming uses downtown. I mean, there's the, there was a, he, um, car repair uh, that's long gone, but that was non-conforming for a while. Um, but um, yeah, there really aren't very many non-conforming uses downtown. Uh, this would create a few.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Haymeyer?
Um, I wonder if staff can comment at all about like what strategies to promote retail growth would be considered? My follow-up question, maybe it's somewhat related, um, is just whether whether the types of uses that are potentially being zoned out or made um conditional over a period of time, it the general philosophy I, I heard when I was on the downtown committee is that it was better to have people of any kind, right, office or non-office, to have that space activated than to have the vacant storefronts, and so I don't know if, if that's supported by, by some of the economic analysis that was done, or if it's just, you know, hearsay, but I'd love to get some clarity on, on what you think the conditions are now.
Yeah, so uh, it's a great question, Commissioner Haymeyer, um, and I'll, I'll tee it up to um our consultant Libby Seifel, who um drafted a, an, an economic analysis for us with kind of three main points uh for recommending additional vibrancy for downtown. So I don't know, Libby, if you can summarize those three main big picture uh recommendations.
Yeah, well, and, and some of them are already in place. Um, good evening, commissioners. Um, they're already happening. The city council's approved a number of initiatives that are happening, um, including, you know, working on the downtown streetscape, which is very important, having more gathering places and activity areas to really enliven, to, to build on what Commissioner Haymeyer was just saying. Um, it also talks about the need to promote retail growth, and it recog- we recognize that there really is the need to have um, non-retail uses in the downtown to increase patronage. Um, I think the recommendation is for ground floor, we're not thinking of office space along Castro Street, but potentially um considering the allowance of, you know, additional health oriented facilities, business oriented facilities, things that may not generate tax revenues as much, but do bring more activity and allow people to combine trips. Um, so that's very important. Um, you have a very important restaurant environment there, so whatever you can do to enhance the restaurant environment is important, and so having more office in the downtown um, along with more residential, right, new residential and office development is important because it brings more patrons, right, to improve the area. Um, but doesn't, again, we're not talking about office on the ground floor, except for in the limited circumstances that Eric um, and Edgar just talked about. And last but certainly not least, we're talking about encouraging upgrades um with some programs that the city could sponsor um, and complimentary infill development, particularly on the corner parcels, which Rashira can talk about more, but there are some underutilized sites with some opportunity areas, and also there are the parking lot sites that the city has, which could be redeveloped.
Is there any talk about some kind of business relocation as sites are getting redeveloped, right? Um, one small business is moving to another site as, you know, new property is coming online. I just, I feel like the options are businesses get forced out, right, like they don't have that opportunity to leapfrog while something's being redeveloped. Is that considered, or that's not part of the suite?
So that's not exactly part of this project, but we are working on the economic vitality strategy. Um, and we're, we're just kicking that off, and, and I think, you know, those types of comments um are, are good to. Um, are, are good to kind of tee into that project as well.
Okay, thank you. It's just helpful to understand where these pieces, because it feels like they're so connected and.
Absolutely.
That's really helpful. Thank you, Libby.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick, uh, minor questions and forgive me if I missed in the, uh, staff report the answers to some of these questions. Um, when would this go into effect if it's approved by the city council? I assume, does it go into effect January one or when does it become effective?
Uh, all ordinances go into effect thirty days after the, uh, council approval. Oh, well, this isn't too, this resolution would go into effect thirty days after the council.
Okay, uh, and how many administrative offices are there now or like how many offices would become non-conforming?
Um, Edgar, do we have that estimate?
Not off the top of my head. I, I don't so know exactly how many. I do know I, I spoke to. Two of them, uh, and, um, essentially. How, how we, uh, write it in the, uh, in area age of the updates doesn't necessarily make them non-conforming per se. Uh, they, they would be allowed to continue to stay there until, as Eric highlighted earlier, uh, set time that they. Transfer over to a different provisional use permit or to in, and allow use.
But not terribly many. It sounds like half a dozen at most, something like that.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, most of the office uses that you'll find on in area age, uh, don't fall under administrative office. Uh, they fall, uh, under, uh, services, uh, such as law firms or, uh, architect offices, et cetera.
I wanted to ask about that. What, how does a business demonstrate pedestrian activity? Like, how do you prove it?
Yeah, so, uh, oftentimes we will set conditions that say, uh, that talk about, uh, the. Uh, level of transparency that has to be in the, the windows. Um, or, uh, we will review the improve, the tenant improvements. To show that they're not, you know, putting, uh, private offices in the front along the street or. Um, you know, heaven forbid restrooms or anything like that, you know, so. Um, you know, we, we do actually iterate quite a bit on many of these provisional use permits on the floor plan. Just to ship, just to have, um, uh, bring the, the most kind of public facing pieces of the use. Towards the, uh, towards the street.
That was it for questions.
Thank you, sir. So I've got two quick questions, Eric. So the first one is in terms of when council, uh, referred to, um. Other types of businesses such as health, uh, were they, did they go specific enough to detail? Uh, what health did not mean? So are we going to have pot stores?
Well, we don't allow, uh, cannabis uses downtown, uh, or, uh, not cannabis retail. That, that has been. Uh, that's a separate use as defined in our zoning ordinance. And so we would need to include that specifically listed. In the downtown precise plan and it's not listed. Um, the, uh. So I, I don't know exactly what council comment you're referring to. Edgar, do you, uh, do you know what council comment is referring to?
Oh, that, so I, I think, uh, contributors, um, that, that was one of the recommendations from the economic analysis. Um, I, I don't believe council particularly referred to, uh, medical or health, uh, uses.
Okay, alright, great. Thank you for clarifying that. And the second question is, in terms of, um. And, and this is for my information here and bear with me. Parking fees, is that also part of this or is that? A discussion that would be tied into the economic revitalization of downtown?
So parking is absolutely a big deal, um, and it's a big deal for the precise plan and the zoning in general. Um, however, based on the very focused. Uh, work in, of this project on these, just these three sub areas. Uh, we, uh, couldn't amend anything as it relates to the precise plan as a whole. And par- parking relates to the precise plan as a whole.
Okay, great. Thanks for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Uh, thank you. Yes, I had a few questions. Um, one, uh, the alleyways, that's city property or is that on private property? Now currently.
The alleyways are city property.
Okay, excellent. Um, now is there an intention that those alleys are going to go away? Or is the intention that they stay and remain?
Uh, no, they, they need to stay because, um, most of the businesses depend on the alleys. Uh, and in fact, council is currently considering closing off the Castro to cars. Um, which adds further need for, um, vehicle access to these buildings via the alleys.
Okay, great. I just wanted to confirm that because, uh, in the updated guidelines that we're looking at, very often it says. If alleys are available, and I don't know of any block that does not have one, so I wasn't sure why we were adding that. Um, do you, is there a reason?
Um, so there may be cases where, um, certainly in, in. Area G, there may be, uh, some cases where there is not an, an alley available. Um, and in area A, um. And I'm thinking, I'm, I'm trying to think back to the standard itself. It may have also been dependent on the site design. Of the, uh, the, the building itself. So if you're, um. Uh. There may be some aspect of the use, um, that may not be able to utilize the alley or. Maybe oriented toward the alley, even, even if there's an alley there. Um, that alley may not be available, uh, based on the specific site design of the bill, of the existing tenant space or the existing. Um, uh, building.
Okay, but the intention is that with any new development, we are not taking away that service lane.
No.
And giving it over to private property. Okay. All right. That will be maintained. Great. Because part B to that question. Was that I noted that, uh, we're also allowing, um, trash and. Services to be, as long as it's enclosed within the property, to be on. The other streets and not required to be in the alley. And that, I, that, that was concerning to me because I figured the alley is where they should all be. So that we don't have that many breaks and blank walls on those. Sort of very public walkable streets, trying to maintain the walkability of. As much as we can here.
So those are, those are two separate standards, um, and. Uh, we would interpret, uh, those two separate standards as both being required. So I, I guess maybe can you, can you better describe the situation that would comply with those standards?
I guess.
The trash would not be on the alley?
Oh, I just, I just noted that, um. I thought, given the way it was worded, that it was then okay. If a new development were to happen, that as long as they had the trash screened. And on their property, that potentially trash truck could just go down one of the, uh, sort of more primary streets. And have their unloading and, you know, pickup there. And that a new, a new building would then just have their like sort of trash loading area right on one of the more primary streets.
No, I, that wouldn't comply with the, the trash standard. That says that all trash service and loading access shall be off an alley if available.
Okay, great. Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. All right. Uh, let's see. Another question I had. Um. And noted that, uh, the administrative office for upper floors potentially in the future could have lobby on Castro. And I was curious if there was a limitation on that width. So that we're not getting a full fifty feet of lobby for a high-tech office, very fancy, smits me, very pretty. Um, however, totally counter to what we're trying to do with maintaining a very walkable. Very retail restaurant oriented three blocks that we've got.
So no, we don't have a specific development standard there. Um, the, uh. The way that we would implement that is that the. Um, and during the design review process, uh, you know, we would use our judgment about. What is just a lobby, you know, and what is more than a lobby, right? There's always some amount of discretion in these processes and, um, and we would. Uh, uh, we would apply that discretion during the development review process.
Okay, I guess so. Alright, there's discretion there. Um, because I know that, you know, we, we, we do have one office building that has an entire ground floor devoted to a lobby. So I just worry, you know, there are things that are common sense to walkability to me or someone else, but. You know, regulations are there to ensure that the worst case doesn't happen. And I was curious if maybe that was a consideration that could be put in.
Um, so we, uh, we looked at that concept briefly, um, and we. Uh. Tried a couple of options such as, uh, maximum percentage of the building or maximum total width. Um, and in, um, many of those cases, it ended up being, um. Uh, having kind of negative circumstances depending on the building dimension that you were looking at or. Um, the potential location that you might be, you know, we, we, we tested all of that in, in different scenarios. Um, and ultimately we, uh, decided to not have a standard and to just kind of use the. Um. Uh, use the, the, the kind of judgment call definition of a lobby. Um, and, and purpose and intent, uh, of the, uh, precise plan to. Um, to guide the development review process.
Okay, and I think, sorry, I don't have very many more, probably just one or two. Uh, I'll just go with the more important one, which is sort of tagging on to that question with, um. Whether or not we have a limitation on putting those lobbies on corners since corners, I know. And I believe, um, Libby can corroborate are critical for maintaining as. Yeah, either restaurant or retail plus, uh, as anchors to the survival of all these small businesses that we have.
Yes, I believe that's a guideline in area H. Do I have that? Correct, Edgar?
I'm, I'm in court right now, right now, yeah.
Yeah, number three, high activity generators, generating uses are especially encouraged at the Castro Street intersections. Entrances, entries to elevator lobbies should not be located at intersections.
Okay, would there, uh-huh, I'm guess, I'm putting out there, maybe it's not time yet since it's time for questions, just putting that. Since we are doing this sort of review and elevating certain guidelines to regulations, that that is one of them. I'll be done with my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Dempsey?
Question I forgot to ask earlier, um. In the rules for storefronts, I noticed there was no discussion of lighting. And one of the things that I have noticed is sort of a problem with Castro Street, particularly when we've had such. A high vacancy rate is there are sections of the street that were up until recently actually pretty dark at night. And night is when we want a lot of people down there. Um, has there been any, is there any reason that we do not address lighting in the sort of. Front of the store, uh, regulations, um, and should we?
Uh, yeah, so it, it hadn't come up as a comment previously, um. Uh, and so it, correct me if I'm wrong, Edgar, um. About whether it's come up as something that we've, we've discussed and, and.
So, no, not necessarily, uh, came up, although, no, Libby did highlight it in, in her, uh, kind of recommendations. To, to increase the lighting, the nighttime lighting. It's, uh, I know it's something that is also being looked at by the. Outdoor pedestrian law, um, and the public works team. And it's my understanding they've already initiated some of the lighting. Place lighting out there and they are further evaluating that, um, as they would be putting the lighting on public right of way.
It is getting better. They've been hanging a lot of lights out there. Uh, they've still got a little bit of work to do, but to the extent that some of the storefronts. Are actually recessed and it creates, it's not just a, you know, it's, it's not just a flat wall as you walk down the street, but it's actually recessed. There's a bunch of space in there. I think having a little bit of lighting, um, for those, because those spaces can be kind of dark, especially if it's a vacant spot. Um, so just give it a thought. Um, I think lighting is actually one of the, one of the ways that we can improve things down there. A lot. And I think not only lighting on the street, but sometimes lighting on the storefront as well.
Oh, uh, you're muted, Chair Cranston. I think I did that to you accidentally.
Okay, um, so follow up on one of Vice Chair Ian's questions. I can think of at least. At least one, maybe two units where there is no access to a, an alley. So they would still be allowed to have. And a trash pickup on the street, wouldn't they? The, the small salon on Dana Street. Um, just east of, uh, west of Castro that I know has a, uh, a little alleyway. I know because I tried to park there. It's right across from Grapevine and it's, I can't park in front of it because that's where their trash goes. Um. And then I don't think Bloomsgiving actually has a back door, do they? Um. So I don't, I mean, they're just a couple. So if they, if they're trapped, are they still able? Get their cash, I'm assuming they're still going to be able to have their trash pickup on the street, on the main streets.
Yes, exactly. That's why we have the language that, that kind of qualifying language in the precise plan saying if, if the alley is available. Then you have to have trash access from the alley.
And then, um, second question, I guess I, Eric, you said that there are some places in the city where when a, when a use is, has essentially expired that it. It's not automatically available going forward, but that's not the way it is in the precise plan. Where do we have? Where is that today that we have? So if, uh, if a provisional use. You know, as somebody, you know, as somebody who's using it leaves, um. That, that, that's automatically reverted to the, to the, to the other standard. That has, they have to start over.
We don't, we only have, not if, not if a tenant leaves, right? So it's not just changing tenants. So you can always pass a permit from tenant to tenant, but we do have, uh, six month. Uh, or one year vacancy resets for allowed uses and provisional uses. That's kind of the standard actually for most of the other zoning districts. Uh, so if a non-conforming use. Um, is, uh, if that site is vacant for a year or more, then. Then it, it reverts. You, you can't re-tenant it with the non-conforming use. Uh, likewise, if there's a provisional use or a conditional use and the space is vacant for a year or more, then you can't. Um, you need a new use permit in order to re-tenant the space.
Is there a reason that that's not applied in the downtown precise plan?
Uh, simply because, well, for the office uses, uh.
Yes.
Um. So the, um, many of the spaces that have, uh, office. Are, um. Are off the main drag, uh, so maybe at the corner of, um. Uh, uh, Dana and, uh, Bryant, for example. Um, many of the buildings are not, um, kind of built for lots of transparency. Um, and kind of create, you know, with the interior tenant spaces to, uh, to facilitate retail. Um, and so it would be a, uh. Costly process with uncertainty for. costly process with uncertainty for, um, the developer, that there would actually be pedestrian traffic there to replace with those, um, to require replacement with those uses if they go vacant.
All right, thank you. Christopher Keert has another question.
Yes, hey, I have a quick question just in terms of process. So if we have a deadline of having the meeting stop at 10, should we, uh, ask for a motion to extend the meeting length time or? I don't remember if that rule here too or not.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Senator, the motion is to start a new item after 10 o'clock. We are still finishing, working on an item that exists.
That's correct.
Okay, cool, thanks. And yes, I have no question.
All right, then we will move on to public comment. Would any member of the public like to provide a comment on this item? So please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Phone users can mute and unmute themselves. The star six, the EPC clerk will start the timer and let you know when your time is up. Why how do we have anyone looking to speak?
Yes, we have two speakers with raised hands. Um, Celia, I'm going to allow you to talk. Actually, I'm gonna share my screen first to share the timer, then go ahead.
Hi, just, um, a brief comment, um, as a representative of Green Spaces Mountain View. I did hear that comment about additional lighting. Um, if lighting standards are introduced, it would be nice if they were, um, Dark Sky Initiative compliant. Um, I know this city is looking at having a Dark Skies ordinance, so it would be nice if, um, any upcoming things also fit within that as that is in the pipeline. Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Cox. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item on behalf of Livable Mountain View. Let me emphasize that prohibiting ground floor administrative offices is essential to maintaining a vibrant, interactive, people-oriented streetscape. Administrative office locations are dead zones which are walled off from the public during the day and generally completely vacant at night. These days, it is even rare for office workers to venture out and patronize surrounding food establishments as it has become customary for many employers to provide food for employers, employees on site. Furthermore, as staff pointed out in an earlier study session for this item, offices can demand a higher rent and if they are permitted on the ground floor, they will soon obliterate a lower rent vibrant uses that they would replace. Then we'd go beyond it and revoke existing conditional use permits for ground floor. Administrative office whenever the current tenant's lease expires and the tenant chooses no longer to rent the property. This ensures the office use will eventually be replaced with a non-office use. Without this, a landlord will never have the incentive to rent on non, to a non-office use. We should not wait for a vacancy to force a change. And I will say that I do know of places on Castro Street that have ground floor administrative office now, uh, that they got in through a commercial, um, conditional use permit. They're not just on the side streets. Uh, Commissioners, please support our recommendation and don't turn our downtown into an office park. Thank you for bringing this item forward and thank you for listening to our point of view. I yield my time.
Any other speakers?
Yes, the next speaker is Hala Alshawani.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Hala Alshawani. I'm a longtime, uh, resident of Mountain View. I would like to support, um, staff's, uh, recommendations for keeping the ground floor in downtown, uh, specifically in the historic, um, area for retail and other services for the public and limited for, um, office use or hopefully turn it over to, uh, being a service and retail, uh, space, uh, once those, uh, office uses expire or leave. I think downtown belongs to everyone and if we want to make it, uh, walkable and, uh, encourage people to, uh, you know, use all the services and, and, uh, enjoy it, then, uh, this is definitely, uh, a step forward for that. Thank you for that and I hope you support staff. Thank you.
And no additional speakers.
We'll bring it back to the commission for the liberation. I'd like to go first, Christopher Clark.
Yeah, I'll go. Um, I generally think this is, um, uh, the, the bulk of this started after, um, uh, or we initiated it, I think, right before I left council. The bulk of the work was done since and I'm, I'm impressed by the, um, the balance that's been struck here. Overall, I, I support, um, uh, I support the staff recommendation here and what's been developed. I think it strikes the right balance. I, um, I probably would have been slightly more permissive on the, on the side streets. That might not be the most popular opinion, but I, I worry a lot about, um, vacant spaces, uh, for long periods of time. I really, I would much rather have a space utilized even if it isn't my ideal, um, tenant than to have a vacant space. But, um, the council will pine on that and, um, and so that's not a reason for me to, uh, to, to vote against that or, or to try and change that. Just, uh, my comments on a few other things that have come up. I, um, I, I, I like the balance that staff has struck here with, um, having the use run, uh, with the land and eventually turn over the way that it's been structured. Doing something more draconian like taking away a, um, a conditional use, uh, when a tenant leaves is, is quite, um, that would be a very big deal, uh, and I think you would have a lot more, um, comments from the downtown committee and maybe some business owners, um, if that were truly on the table here. So I, I just, uh, I don't think at this point it's, um, that's something that should, uh, we should go backwards on. I, I think the, I think the balance that's been struck here is the right balance and I've, I've seen, um, some of those, um, more draconian measures, uh, especially in San Francisco backfire, um, where you, you end up with vacant spaces because no one wants to, uh, spend the money to fix it up, um, and, uh, because they've lost the, the use that the current building structurally is sort of set up to handle as, as staff mentioned, Dana Bryant. Um, and so I, I don't think, um, I don't think we should be, um, going that far in terms of imposing our will on, um, on those, um, on those business owners. So that's a long way of saying, I, I think the right balance here has been struck. I know there were other comments about, um, you know, lobbies and corner uses and which I, I generally agree with. I just think that if there are actually going to be regulations, we need to be very specific, we need to be able to come up with very specific, you know, percentages or square footages. And I think as staff have mentioned, that's very difficult to come up with. And in those cases, I've just learned over the years that we have an amazing staff who I think generally understands over time, the uses that the council was most comfortable with, even though that sometimes evolves. And, um, I've just learned to trust their judgment on those things and I haven't seen anything too awful, um, come out of that, at least, uh, at least in the recent past. So overall, I'm, I'm supportive of the, um, of the precise plan amendments as, as drafted. And, uh, and, uh, well, I'll let someone else make an admission now, since I spoke.
Yeah, uh, President Yan.
Yeah, so, um, I am also, uh, very supportive of, uh, you know, the recommendation. Um, I'm very happy, uh, that we are having a, I think, long overdue discussion around, the, the kind of downtown that long-term we want. It feels nice, um, to see that this discussion is, is moving towards a preference towards active, walkable. Commissioner Dempsey, I loved your commentary on the lighting. I think that's a, a, a critical piece of activation. I, 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 that's what I want to see, you know, that's what I want to grow up in. Um, I'm already grown up. There you go. I'm still growing, guys. Um, but I, I, I do definitely, um, you know, I, in terms of balance, Commissioner Clark, I appreciate your commentary on balance too. Like, I think that, you know, it, it's one of the powers that people have and don't realize they have oftentimes is like, um, starting history at convenient points. And I think that in terms of balance, like, let's think about how far, how many years um, our city has had in terms of, um, developing or, or having a downtown that has skewed the balance heavily towards administrative office. I mean, like just recently, right? I think you, you probably saw the Voice article around that Sobrato project. There's a clear preference, a clear consciousness around, hey, you know, we, we probably want to start correcting that balance, right? There's a reason why this is a conversation that we're having. And so I very much would be comfortable and in fact, I would actually advocate that not only do we support the recommendation, but I think that, um, there's no harm, like if, if we have three other commissioners that also agree. You know, I, I think there's no harm in, you know, um, sending commentary to council, saying that, you know, there is a general support for the exploration of what a conditional use permit. You know, what that might look like essentially. And so I, I am supportive of, you know, taking this a little bit further. Um, we're suggesting to council that, you know, we explore greater options, um, for limiting administrative office. Um, I think the balance is way out of whack in the favor of administrative office. And so I think that, um, you know, yeah, this is a great conversation to have around the kind of city, the kind of downtown that we want to be able to have moving forward. So, um, yeah, notch me in on that side of definitely supportive of exploring greater, um, restrictions on administrative uh, office in the downtown.
Eric, Commissioners, Vice Chair Yan.
I'll just go ahead and first speak to what Commissioner Nunes had said. I think I would be in favor of investigating what legal and recourse is there, especially along Castro. Especially since it is so skewed. Uh, I understand that the conditional use permit was given at one point and it, you know, there's, it's tricky to, uh, remove it. However, if the, you know, it's just a matter of parity and fairness to everyone else on Castro as well, or, you know, the area that we're looking at. So if there's a way to phase it over time or if, whatever it is, I'm open to that as well, to looking at that. I, I generally am not a fan of over-regulating either. What I found sometimes when you do over-regulate is that it, it takes away the ability for some creative innovative stuff, design-wise. However, um, given what, what I've seen, sometimes, again, I'll, I'll reiterate, what I feel like is common sense to retain a walkable, historic, um, very vibrant area is not as common as I would like. And very easily looking at the guidelines, there's room for harm and I just, I don't want to over-regulate, but I also want to minimize the absolute worst. So there are just a couple of things that I'll just bring up. Um, I've brought up a couple already. One, I believe for the, the building height in area H there for the 100, 200 block, there's an additional five foot allowed and that was proposed in order to allow for the ground floor retail to have some more space to attract new tenants. And I, I completely think that's a great idea. However, I would frame it so that the plus five feet is not for the total height that it is specifically for the ground floor. So that we're not trying to, you know, we get an extra five feet, maybe that gets you another story, but the ground floor is still squatty and short. And then someone says, oh, sorry, we can't lease this out. I'm not in favor of allowing more height and not gaining what we want. So it's important to, to word it, right? I was glad to hear alleys are city property and that we'll be retaining that. Great. Back to the corners. Again, everywhere, everything I know and everywhere I've read, you've got cities across the United States trying to bring back their main street. And what I've heard from retail specialists is that those corners are so important. If we allow administrative office lobbies to take those, we are pretty much just slashing away our intention of what we want. So I think first and foremost, we need to keep in mind what our philosophy is, what it is that we are trying to gain by doing these regulations and follow forth on that. So I am advocating for administrative lobbies to not be on the corners. I understand there is difficulty in limiting the proportion, the dimension of administrative lobbies along Castro. But I feel like it is important enough to do something. I don't know what that is. So I am looking to staff for recommendations there because, you know, God love developers, you know, a lot of them are with the community, want what the community wants, but there are a lot that, you know, they don't have an economic incentive to, to do what the city wants, what the community wants. It's just not their business model necessarily. Um, there's, can be overlap, but we find that that's not necessarily a hundred percent overlap. So I would hope with these, uh, the revisions that we're, we're, we're going to try to diminish the most harm because the death by a thousand cuts and our little three blocks, which is already, you know, some places are already a little bit struggling, still doing well for a great chunk of them. But I would like to see that it has helped through grants and other things like that. It is important enough, I think, to, for the community, for the city as a whole, to try to put effort, find the political will, find the money to get this to be what it is we want it to be. Thanks.
Dempsey?
I, I think Vice Chair Yan hit it, you know, said it perfectly. I mean, this, this is a small part of a much, much larger project for Mountain View and a really important one. I mean, I'm absolutely going to support staff recommendation today. I support, you know, prohibiting administrative offices at grand level and I understand the reason for it. You know, we, we want to make it walkable and active and fun and have a whole bunch of folks down there. I really want to see that. And so I'm, I, I've always struggled a little bit with the idea of kind of narrowing the range of tenants that you could have downtown because right now, I mean, our vacancy rate's like 15, 20%. I don't know exactly what it is, but it's bad, right? So the idea of saying, you know, we, 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 there's people we want out of here. I struggle with that because I feel like we gotta get some people down there. And so, um, but anyway, what the staff recommendation is, is great, totally support it. But I guess I would just say as part of this larger project for Mountain View, there, I'm really excited, but there's a lot we gotta do. There's a lot we gotta do. The lighting is still substandard and frankly, it's haphazard block to block. It's just all over the place and, and the same thing is true of the tables. Where we put the tables, what planners are, like the aesthetic is like urban yard sale. It's just, it's like anything goes and we gotta get our arms around that. And this is not the place to do it. I'm just really hopeful that as we revitalize the downtown, um, we definitely can and should be more picky about who gets a space down there. Um, I think that that is entirely appropriate. Um, yes, and with that, I'm going to be supporting the staff recommendation.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be quick. Now, I'm in support of the recommendation and I hope it just promotes better communication between the business community and Mountain View in general because though we don't regulate or enforce or create policy here, just to know when I spoke to some restaurant owners, uh, because of COVID in that situation, uh, having to adjust on the fly was tough for them. And the city's done everything it could to help them in certain ways, uh, and others, it's been a bit more of a, of a chore. Having owners spend their own money to buy their own awnings and then be told you can't use those anymore. Do something else according to the city. Well, that's not so helpful, right? So having these standards ahead of time would really help out, hoping that with, because of this COVID situation that we went through, that that example doesn't happen again. And outside of that, I'm looking forward to see what other ideas we can generate and help so that downtown becomes more of a vibrant community that, that it can be. Um, and that we give them as much support that we can because these three, four blocks right now, still alive on our mountain view right now. You go out there on the weekends and you can see the life, you can see the vibrancy. We're not out of COVID yet, but when you see that type of gathering, uh, you see the ability for families to share the wealth with the community of business and reciprocate that opportunity of having to be served a meal. the ability for families to share the wealth with the community of business and reciprocate that opportunity of having to be served a meal or going to a bookstore or getting a boba drink or what have you, and that livens up the place, right? Gives you hope that you're still part of a community that hasn't lost touch in terms of what human interaction is all about and what a downtown can bring to life in that respect to how we look at one another as human beings. So, um, having said that, uh, thank you for the recommendation, and I'll be in support of that. Thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Hamer.
Um, thank you. I think I, I will be supportive of the staff recommendation, and I think one challenge, and as Commissioner Hampsey alluded to, like, it makes me uneasy. I understand that the balance right now feels skewed, but it makes me uneasy if, if we're confronting vacancies and the possibility of another use. Um, it is no secret, I have been trying to keep my local coffee shop in business during the pandemic, and I will tell you that there are a lot of our small businesses that make Mountain View vibrant that are barely hanging on. And so to see the economic vitality really reach out to, I mean, Dana Street Roasting is celebrating twenty years in this community, and I can tell you that they are really hurting. And so it's the businesses on and off Castro that really need that economic vitality strategy, and I'm, I'm excited that that's moving forward because people care a lot about downtown, but I think there's always this tendency to say, you know, let's, let's focus on, you know, what we can do to retain things. And, and I don't, I don't see it unless we're really committed to saying when new development comes in, we're going to support the existing businesses and say, here's some other opportunities to retain you. So I hope that's part of the larger strategy.
Commissioner Yan.
Yep, um, so I just wanted to even, I, I guess, like, I don't know, I, not the words I can, but also raise my hand and say I am strongly supportive of Commissioner Yan's, um, last comments around the corner office or corner spaces. Um, personally, I think regulation is great. Um, I agree with like the possibility of overregulating, but I think, um, again, I, I think having the vision laying out, um, that's very critical. Um, I also want to say that, uh, you know, in terms of one experience I had, um, I've actually had an opportunity to do a business deal with a very prominent company on our downtown within this historic core, about three to five hundred employees, um, work in this office space. And they invited me over, and that first floor was a ginormous cafeteria. And almost all of the people that work there just go down and they go to their cafeteria, they eat their lunch, and they go back to their desk. I mean, we're talking about vacancy, like, what if those three to five hundred people had to step outside for once? Uh, so, yeah, without, uh, you know, I'm aware of like causation and, you know, um, correlation and such, like fallacies, what have you. But like, I, I know personally I've experienced, um, that, you know, kind of inward-looking like sinkhole, if you will, around that first floor administrative presence. So, um, I want to also support, if there's a way, you know, if anyone else supports that as well, you know, I would love to get behind Commissioner Yan's, um, recommendation on the corner, uh, spots. Again, within whatever legal and et cetera mechanisms we're able to convey and communicate. Um, you know, also that, uh, conditional use permit, and then also, um, share that anecdote around, you know, if we have vacancies, maybe we ought to have, um, people step outside a little bit more.
Um, Eric or Edgar, could you pull up the chart that showed the where the, 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 um, new provisional use permits would be required for office or administrative?
Yes, I can pull that up.
I didn't see that anywhere in the other stuff, and it was the first time I'd kind of seen that, and I'm, so I'm. The places that we were maybe talking about restricting administrative use, the areas in red, right?
That, that is correct. So the areas in red, uh, which encompass is, uh, Castro, so Area H, uh, the frontage of Castro and one block, so the finger streets of Castro. Um, and it would only be on the ground floor, so we would continue to allow it provisionally on floors above.
So, I guess I'm, I'm, uh, kind of, I, I'm not a big fan of ground floor administrative, but I, I, I understand Mr. Clark's feedback and the feedback from the public. I, I guess I would be, we're, we're not talking about a lot of corners here. Um, I would love to see that to be, you know, these are, they are kind of key places. Um, the, the places that I see most, you know, that the corner of Villa and Castro and Dana and Castro and California and Castro and, and, um, guess I'm, I, I, I'm respectful of the, you know, trying to do, not do too much of, uh, um, you know, with, with existing uses, things like, says right there, law firms and architects are not considered administrative, and we do have some of those on the street, there's real estate on the street. But I, I would be, I would be supportive of, of Commissioner Yan's recommendation. I'm trying to do more to strengthen particularly the corners. Um, at the very least, I think the the stuff that Commissioner Nunez talked about is actually, right now, not even included in the red areas. Um, a large extent, they're actually in the blue, so those would still be permitted, um, under the, with the provisional, provisional use, so. Um, I would be, it sounds like there's three people in support of of the, of the corners. I don't know if there's, if anyone else has any other thoughts on it, but it must add enough to, to encourage you to, to, to vote for a change at this point, but, um, at the corners, at the very least, I think doing something more to strengthen, you know, the administrative entrances, try to move them away from the corner as much as possible, that it's a door, get upstairs as opposed to, you know, a lobby or something like that, so. Um, another we have, Commissioner Clark.
Yeah, maybe I can, if I can just ask, um, staff, um, because this is um, the first time I've come into this in a while, so, I mean, are there things that we can do? I, I still think it's just very difficult to come up with, you know, if you're going to create regulations, you know, you need to be very concrete about what those are. Um, but are there things in the guidelines, um, where, you know, based on the comments tonight, where, you know, I certainly care about the corners too. I just, I'm, I'm not smart enough to come up with what the right regulatory framework would be to guarantee an outcome. And so I'm wondering if there are things that we can do in terms of, maybe not necessarily the ordinance, but the implementation and the guidelines around the, the concerns that you heard tonight around, you know, corners or, um, the size of lobbies. Um, I, it's just, it's hard for me to come up with a, a specific recommendation in terms of regulation, not knowing the context of the tenant or things that are just going to change over time. Um, but I don't know if there's anything we can run with there or not.
Well, I think you have a couple of options as a body. One is, uh, to, uh, certainly, we, we don't need you to, um, you know, draft, you know, a standard, uh, here tonight. I think, uh, you know, the, the, uh, Vice Chair Yan's direction to, um, to, to staff to, you know, um, craft a standard and present it to council, uh, that addresses this concern for not having lobbies at corners, uh, I think would be direction enough for us to kind of think about over the next month. You know, how could that be crafted in a way that is, um, you know, feasible under a range of different scenarios uh, and, uh, achieves the outcome that the EPC requests? Um, but your question, you know, is, is, uh, another option is to, uh, think about, um, uh, so we're, we're a little limited in how we can modify the Area H guidelines. Um, as I said before, you know, this, this, uh, uh, these amendments are really focused on Areas A, G, and H, but the Area H guidelines are actually referenced in other subareas. Uh, so we, we have limited, um, uh, ability to modify those uh, without going outside of the, um, kind of noticing and scope of the, of the project. Um, but, uh, as you said, uh, maybe there's some, um, uh, additional, uh, research we could look at for other, uh, implementation tools uh, and present those to council, although in effect, the standards are the implementation tool. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I can't quite think of anything else. Uh, I'm going to throw this to Ruchira, who's our, uh, architecture consultant, to see who, uh, if, uh, she has any ideas for how to thread this needle of, um, of the, the corner, uh, lobbies.
Thank you, Eric, and good evening, commissioners. Uh, a percentage, we do have a few options on how we can address the corner lobby issues, and generally, we do not prefer to go by a percentage of the site facade because, say, if you have a fifty-foot wide side frontage and you, we wanted to limit it to like five percent, that just amounts to like two point five feet, which is not even enough for a door. So we would look at different options on like how wide, um, the lobbies could be. Um, we have proposed different options to different cities, like twenty feet or twenty-five, uh, but that could amount to, not for the corner sites, uh, specifically, but for some of the other ones, that could amount to the entire frontage of the site. So, which is why we wanted to leave it to, uh, the city, uh, to the city's discretion, but if there is a concern about corner size specifically, then we can try to add something to the effect of that, and also to try and limit it to a certain distance uh, from the corner, like, the entrances or the lobbies should not be, say, ten feet from the corner. I, and I'm just throwing out a number right now, but we can definitely come up, uh, with some kind of a standard specifically for corner sites only, though.
Yeah, I think the, the concern I'm hearing is, is more like, you know, corner sites for administrative lobbies along Castro Street, right? In that Area H, that key area, um, but, you know, I'm, I'm personally comfortable being, with those being addressed in, in the guidelines on a case-by-case basis, but, um, I also completely understand my, my colleagues', um, you know, desire to look more intently at those, so I'll defer on that. And then the other question that I wanted to ask was, um, was there any, um, did you delve too deep? The one thing that I have seen work like reasonably well, except during COVID, uh, was, you know, if a use is abandoned, you know, there's a threshold at which a use is considered abandoned after, you know, two years of, of vacancy or something like that, which, you know, obviously, exceptions were made during COVID or during significant recessions, but, um, you know, is, is that something that, that was looked at as maybe a, um, you know, a compromise on with, you know, an administrative office permit in, in these areas? You know, if it's abandoned for, um, and vacant for, for some period of time, you know, you know, like two plus years, um, that, that, then they have to go back and get another permit, and obviously, it wouldn't be, administrative office wouldn't be granted at that point.
So that, uh, yeah, so that's our typical way of doing non-conforming, um, although it's a much shorter time period. Um, I think it depends on the permit, but it, it's either six months or one year.
Yeah, I think in this case, I'd lean toward something a little bit longer, just given the, everything that everyone has just been through and what will likely be another, well, I won't, I won't predict the, the economic, uh, cycles, but it's not looking great right now, um, based on interest rates and where, where interest rates head. So, um, anyway, I'll, I'll stop talking. I, I still, I generally support the staff recommendation. If there's, if there's some way to like weave in some additional, um, research around how we might handle, you know, corner lobby entrances, uh, for administrative offices along Castro Street specifically in Area H, I'd, I'd certainly be open to that, um, and I'd, I'd be open to, you know, a threshold for, for an abandoned use downtown, um, that is, that is somewhat reasonable and doesn't, um, result in someone tomorrow losing, losing the, the permit that they, they've gained. So it would be something that, you know, the clock would start after, um, you know, this new package of amendments goes into effect and that sort of things, that everyone has plenty of time to adapt.
I guess something would be effective that we move forward with the staff recommendation, but with direction to EP, to, to staff to, to present to council options for the corners and options on abandonment sites. Is that what I'm kind of hearing?
No, that would be fine with me, but I, I'm just one, I'm just one commissioner.
Vice Chair Yan.
Um, is it just the abandoned sites, or is it for the administrative office conditional use? That if that is abandoned, then it, it shifts over to, uh, what is?
It was, it was specifically for that, so if a, if an administrative office use was abandoned for, you know, choose your threshold, I would, I would be a little liberal on that, just given everything that everyone's been through. But, um, but then they would have to go seek another permit, and obviously, they would get administrative office at that point after it's been abandoned.
I understand. Thank you. Um, I was going to also put out, if anyone wanted to include the extra five feet, if the purpose was for extra five feet to be for the ground floor use to get better retail, that the five feet be for ground floor and not for the total height.
Commissioner Nunez.
Uh, yes, to, to the five feet.
Uh, Commissioner Clark.
I, I'm generally more liberal when it comes to height generally, so I don't, I think the intent here was when something's redeveloped, um, and if providing an extra five feet in other spaces, um, allows for something to be, um, um, to be redeveloped in a more flexible way that meets the intent of the downtown precise plan, I'm generally okay with it. So I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be that restrictive, but that's just.
Uh, Commissioner Hamer.
I'd agree with what Commissioner Clark just said about the five feet.
Dempsey.
Yeah, I could go with five feet. Some of the older buildings have really low ceilings in the first floor, so I could see the logic for it.
Sounds like there's not consensus on that, but it sounds like there may be consensus around, uh, essentially, uh, if I heard, heard a motion that's something effective, uh, for staff recommendation with guidance to staff to bring to council, um, recommendation, potentially additional recommendations on corners and how to do, and, uh, abandonment of units after, uh, abandonment of administrative uses reverting to, uh, that the commission, use permit goes away, uh, after a period of when, have, have a time to be recommended by staff. That sound like something that we could get a motion on, something like that? Mr. Clark.
Uh, I, I, I will, I will move that as long as staff feels like they have enough information there and feels comfortable with it, and it's not too nebulous.
Can someone restate what the, I mean, the cor, the corner piece, can you actually state what you mean by corners? I, I want to have a clarification.
I can try, um, and then Vice Chair, I see you have your hand up too, so, um, uh, but, uh, actually, I'll, I'll let Vice Chair go first.
Oh, okay. I was just going to say that administrative office lobbies shall be limited on the corners or not allowed on the corners by whatever measurement or metric the staff would suggest.
But I think they'd be allowed as long as they aren't. Um, the, as long as they don't exceed certain parameters.
Oh, no, I was saying that they should not be allowed on the corners, given that the corners are crucial for retail to draw a person walking down from one block to another. They're mainly focusing on what the corner is. And if the corner doesn't draw them, sometimes like fifty feet before you get to the next retail, they won't cross the street. And maybe Libby can jump in there. I, I don't want you guys to just take my word for how important corners are, so.
Oh, I, I agree. I just, one of it, one of the lobby doubles as, I've seen administrative lobbies double with, you know, there's also a retail component to it too. Um, so I assume what you're talking about is there's a corner that, who, that's sole purpose is a lobby for an office.
Yes. Yes, if it's retail as well and their lobby elevator just happens to be in the middle of a store or to the back of the store, that seems reasonable. I'm just looking at the design guideline recommendations that say that the corners need to be highly active, most active. And since we are not trying to do administrative office on the ground floor, it seems counter to allow administrative lobby on the corners that are crucial to retail if we're trying to maintain retail plus and this vibrant downtown, walkable downtown. Is that helpful?
It is helpful. I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of a, I'm trying to think of a scenario where you have a building that happens to be at the corner, your upper levels are administrative office, your ground floor is your only way in. That has to be your lobby. And perhaps there's a retail component that is, I can think of a specific instance of this that is like a coffee shop, but it's sort of walled off, you know, to the side of the entry. I don't know. This is why I generally trust staff.
I'll just jump in here and try to, you know, answer Commissioner Clark's question, which is, you know, we do have a bunch of examples, you know, that basically all three of the four corners of California and Castro are multi-story office buildings that have retail, you know, spaces oriented towards the corner, right? The access to the upper floors is mid-block on one of the side streets. So I think that's kind of the scenario that Vice Chair Yin is talking about. And just in terms of trying to kind of clarify what I'm hearing from a lot of folks is trying to come up with language that takes that guideline and promotes it to a standard, but looks at all the different kind of permutations of, you know, lot size and configuration and things like that for what a reasonable quantitative standard might be for keeping those lobbies away from the actual corner. I'll also, well, I forgot what I was going to say, but I'll leave it there.
Vice Chair Yin?
I was gonna, then if that's the case and Commissioner Clark is okay with having that motion read that way, I will second it.
Oh, sorry, the other thing. Remember, I apologize for jumping in. I did hear some people wanting to focus that standard specifically to Castro Street. And I just wanted to get clarity on that.
Castro Street in Area H, yeah, Area H on Castro Street.
Vice Chair Yin?
I will second.
Can I just clarify? So the Odd Fellows Building on Villa and Castro is not considered an administrative use? Is that correct?
No, it's not.
What is that classified as?
Fraternal organization, social organization. It's a separate.
Mr. Clark?
It was just to restate the motion for everyone. So it's the staff recommendation with the, with, as Eric mentioned, elevating the guidelines around corner lobbies along Castro Street in Area H from the guideline to a standard as Vice Chair Yin talked about. And then the piece that I don't know, there are three or more commissioners interested in is whether or not to ask staff to look at abandoned use thresholds for administrative offices in the areas identified as part of this package of amendments. So I'm not sure what the threshold should be. And I think there should be obviously some ability to provide relief during something like a pandemic where there's really no way not to have an abandoned use. But I do think that I've seen some success with that in other places that are trying to ensure that something isn't grandfathered forever. And, you know, having a vacant space for more than a year or two, I think is a good way of doing that.
Thank you. I guess. I had Vice Chair Yin probably on that area, maybe Commissioner Nunez and myself. But there was probably at least four, Christian Haymeyer is nodding her head as well. So I think that's, I think that can be part of the motion.
I'm happy to include that as long as, Eric, you're comfortable with that being something that isn't a super heavy lift to grab something around.
You know, if there's any further guidance on what the kind of parameters for the timeline should be from a policy level, other than a pandemic, which hopefully won't come along again for a long time. But I haven't heard a whole lot about like what some of the considerations should be. You know, maybe some examples are looking at, you know, kind of what typical vacancy periods are, looking at possibilities for, kind of looking at broader economic trends and basing it on that. Or there's also just kind of keeping it simple and consistent with other standards in the city is kind of another policy direction to go. So, you know, I don't know if there's any further guidance that EPC wants to give on that timeline.
I'm fine with consistency. Yeah, I'm fine with consistency. My issue here is that I'm not sure those handful of, I'm not sure this has been put forward as a suggestion in a public meeting before with the relevant landowners or business owners. And so I don't want to spring that on them if they've had a vacant site for six months already. So certainly the timeline, if we do establish one, certainly the timeline wouldn't start until, you know, these updates take effect. And maybe there's a grace period or something like that. And maybe it's already getting more complicated than it's worth for the handful of sites that we're talking about. So I'm starting to second guess myself.
I guess in my mind, and it, you know, I think we have people like Libby and Richera who can look at this and say, what are you seeing in other places? And come back with a recommendation, something that says, okay, initially, it's, you know, there's a grace, like you said, there's a grace period. And then it works its way down to something consistent. We would certainly make sense. And the council has suspended other things during COVID. I don't know why this wouldn't be if something dramatic like COVID happened again. This couldn't be something that was, you know, suspend enforcement for a period of time. Hopefully, we'll never see a COVID again, and it'll never be a problem we have to deal with.
Okay, what can I, what I'm hearing, though, is that there's a request for staff to look into options for the elimination of an administrative office use on the ground floor after a period of vacancy. And I guess I would say that depending on what the options are, since if it hasn't been surfaced and outreach to date, that, you know, one of the conclusions could be, we need to do more outreach on this with the affected businesses. So, you know, it's something that I think staff can look into, but the end result will obviously be unclear and will depend on what the options are ultimately.
I think that's fine. I think if it's something that's transmitted to council as an idea that was raised at EPC that had a generally a majority of interest in. And if the, and if the, and if what staff says to council as part of that is like, this is a big enough change that if you want to do it, it would require additional outreach, then I'm fine with that. I just, as long as it's raised, I think there was sufficient interest on EPC in finding some way to to limit that over some long period of time, if possible.
Are we, can Eric, Eric, are we good? On what the framework of the motion is?
Yeah, for sure. I, you know, it's the staff recommendation promoting the guideline number three in Area H about corners to a standard for corners along Castro Street and looking into ways to quantify that standard among a range of different parameters. And then looking at timelines for offices to be required to, administrative offices to be required to convert to an allowed use after a vacancy with some discussion, some staff review of whether additional outreach is needed or other kind of parameters that would make sense presenting that analysis to council.
I think that's a motion. Christian Clark?
That is, that is so moved.
There is second. Vice Chair Yin?
Second the motion.
Any last minute discussion? If not, I will, he always moves around on the screen here. There she is. Whitehill, can you call the role, please?
Yes, Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dempsey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Commissioner Haymeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Nunez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yin?
Aye.
And Chair Cranston?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, so we will move on to item five, staff reports. Any updates, Eric? Noticed in the agenda that the next meeting is the 19th, so apparently there's no meeting.
We don't, we don't have an item for October 4th or 5th or whatever the next meeting, standard meeting date was, so that meeting's canceled. We do have tentatively scheduled the Google Middlefield Park project for the meeting after that in October. I want to remind the EPC that we have the upcoming Celebration of Service for all of your hard work on October 10th. Also want to talk about a historic ordinance outreach meeting that we held earlier in the month and that we have surveys underway through October 31st. You can access those surveys through mountainview.gov/historic. You know, you can log on as many times as you want. And we encourage people to go on there and talk about what they think is important about the history of Mountain View and any stories or important buildings or anything else to provide that input for the historic ordinance process. And then, of course, we have the virtual workshop still going on for R3 through the end of the month. So weighing in on each of the, how R3 is affected in each of the different neighborhoods, that virtual workshop is still going on. So people should continue to log into that. Those are my announcements.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Yeah, I wanted to share. Today, is this the time where I can share if I met with developers or what I've done representing the EPC or? I just flagged out.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Sorry, my video is a little choppy right now too, so bear with me. So today I was invited to attend the Community Service Agency's Hometown Heroes Luncheon. And the invitation was extended to me by Gray Star via KM Tibido Consulting LLC. Unfortunately, I had a family emergency, so I wasn't able to attend. But full transparency, that's the invite I had, and I wanted to share that with everyone in general. Thank you.
Mr. Haymeyer?
And just one upcoming event, especially for not meeting on the 6th. And I have been working through Stanford with a group called Thrive, the Alliance for Nonprofits in San Mateo County, along with Nostra Casa, Climate Resilient Communities, and Rise South City. There's going to be a summit, a virtual summit on October 3rd. And I'm happy to get the link to Eric. But it's really about hearing the climate change impacts by frontline communities in San Mateo County and getting folks to hear how is that community thinking about preparing for seattle rise? A lot of it's related to land use. And virtual session, there's going to be some really, I think, pertinent takeaways to what's happening in Santa Clara County. So just want to flag that. I think it's the first of its kind where we're really hearing from community voices with policymakers, funders, academics. We're really trying to have a cross-sector representation. So I'll send it around on Monday, October 3rd, if anyone can join virtually.
Any other announcements? More just news. Maybe some of you have already heard that the council approved funding the Terabella development that's 100% below market rate. So I thought that was great news. And then since it's more, whether it's of interest, I had a chance to listen to it. And Eric can probably circulate as to which one it was. One of the items that was, part of, a big part of the housing element review was looking at things like sources of funding. And council did a recent study session on that. And the work that Wayne and those guys did on it, I thought was just, was kind of amazing. And so it was, if you're interested in what the city's doing and how it's going to secure funding going forward and help to do more in below market housing, it's worth at least getting the staff report and reading through that. And if you have time to listen to the council session on it. It was, I thought it was great. And if that's it, then we will adjourn the meeting at 10:46 PM and see you again on October 19th, 2022. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.